All right, Joe, we're going to go out of here. Forty minutes. Forty minutes.
Is Lauren not coming? She's here. Oh, she's here. Hey, Cory, would you be a huge favor? It's my pleasure. Yeah. Thank you. That's it, you're not. You're taking me. I just got done on your hands and he's to plug in my power cord. You actually. Actually, that was the other one. I can't. Oh, was it over there? Yeah. Okay. I can't make it four hours.
I can't play "Worth is Right."
Good evening and welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session for September 3, 2015. There she is. All right. First item on our agenda is a call to the audience. Is there any? A call to the audience. Each member has up to three minutes to speak on any of tonight's agenda items listed under Sections 2, 3A, and 3B. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Could you please get my attention? I do have some cards first I'm going to read off, and then after that, we'll go to the public. And first one we have is Marianne Miller.
Start this time.
First order.
First order. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Marianne Miller. I'm the president and CEO of the Tempe Chamber of Commerce. We are at 909 East Apache Boulevard. I am here to, once again, state our opposition to the publicly financed city campaign system. And we think that it is bad use of taxpayers' dollars. Nearly a third of it would go towards administration, and that money can better be spent someplace else. We are intrigued by the new item that was added to the agenda, though, on the campaign finance reform for Tempe city elections. Certainly, it increases the transparency. We like that. We'd like to do some investigation as to whether we can roll back the legislative limits that were increased and what kind of unintended consequences. Excuse me. Consequences there may be with that. But we'd like to move forward on looking at that. With that, I wish you well.
The question.
Yes.
You mentioned that a third would be spent on administration. Where did that number come from?
That number came from the information that came at the last meeting on the cost analysis. That was approximately $70,000 for annual salary, the workstation, the candidate statement pamphlet.
Yeah. So that's per cycle. So actually, the way it's worded, just for point of clarification, is in the first year, it would be 20% in order for them to basically get it started, and it would be 5% each year thereafter. The only other funding they would get would be from qualifying contributions. So in terms of the revenue that we would be generating, the 5% actually would only come in the case where the fund drops below $15,000. So maybe you're looking at an old version, but...
I've not seen a new version. Is there a new version?
Yeah.
This one's dated 8/6. There was nothing in the council packet.
Yeah, there is. There is in the council packet.
Is it? I did not. I did not see it before I left the office at 2:00.
Okay. And actually, I don't think it's changed from the old version, anyway. But it's... I think, actually, that document that Regina distributed said what I'm saying, that it's 20% in the first year and 5% if it drops below 15.
No, it talks about the year revenue, but for the program expenses themselves.
Right.
To operate and do the program, rather than going to the candidates, it's $70,000. Has that number changed?
Well, just keep in mind that...
I mean, I can show you the cost analysis that I'm looking at.
I haven't seen the letter. Is there any...
Just keep in mind that there's additional...
Is this...
I'm sorry, just a second. Just keep in mind that there's additional revenue that comes in from the qualifying contributions as well. So it's not all revenue from whatever the funding mechanism is. And again, it is 20% in the first year to get it started, but it's only 5% thereafter. So just...
Councilmember Mayor Dona Savage?
Well, I would just say, I know exactly what you're referencing, and I don't know if that's been an updated document. I don't know, David. Do you know? Has that particular document itself been updated? I don't remember seeing anything similar to that.
Mayor and Robin, rather than going back and just updating sort of what we had last time, which was placeholder summaries, we just did it all in the ordinance. So if you look at the ordinance itself, it's actually made, it's spelled out pretty clearly in the ordinance.
Did the ordinance have the expenses in it? The expenses of the program?
The ordinance had the budget for the clerk's office.
It does?
It does.
Is that true?
The ordinance does have the fees collected, the amount that would go to the city clerk's office as estimated, the 5% quali... or, excuse me, $5 qualifying contributions, and then two times the contributions, correct?
But does it have the actual expenses that would be...
For the operation of it, that managed...
I'm sorry.
Management.
I'm speaking out of turn.
No, I think you're talking about the management piece, right? That's what I thought.
Yes.
Not necessarily about those $5. I think that you're right, that's in there, but the management piece of the expense to the clerk's office.
Right.
Okay.
And that's not in there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next is Samantha Pistras. Welcome. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Hello, my name's Samantha Pistras. I'm a Tempe resident. I love to live in Tempe. I think that you guys are great, and thank you for everything that you guys have done. I do. I'm here to speak about publicly financed elections, and I'm here to urge you guys to put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. I can totally understand that if you're against clean elections personally, that you're tempted to kill it right now and not let it see the light of the ballot. And I totally get that, but I think that the responsible thing to do is to put it on the ballot and let the people decide. Putting it on the ballot is definitely not a guarantee that it's going to pass. You know, we might, we might put it on the ballot, and the voters of Tempe are going to say they don't want clean elections. That's a real possibility. And I thank you guys so much for having the public forum and for allowing public input into this. You guys didn't have to do that, and I think it's great that you did. And from what I've seen from all of that is that this is not a clear-cut issue, and that it really is something that I think the voters should decide. And we've been really lucky, you know, we... None of you had to run on clean elections. The only one here who has ever run on clean elections, from my knowledge, is David Shapiro, Representative Councilmember Shapiro. And he's, you know, he's for putting it on the ballot. And so on behalf of the District 26 Democrats, as well as Chair of the District D-26 Democrats, and just as being a Tempe resident, I really, really urge you guys to put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. I really think it's the responsible thing to do, even if you're against clean elections. I know you probably don't want to have to campaign against it for the next few months, but this, especially when there's money in politics, it's something that the voters should decide. So thank you, guys, for really thinking about this and taking the time to consider it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Juan Mendez. Representative Mendez.
Hello. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Juan Mendez. I'm the state legislator for District 26, representing Tempe and Mesa and the Salt River Pima Roco Indian community. I'm also a substitute teacher in our high school system. Just got out in time to get down to here. So I want to thank you for letting us have this opportunity to speak today, but also thank you for the last opportunity we had to put this before the public and to bring in a lot more support. I was there and spoke at that meeting, and was taking tally of all the other constituents, and way more than majority of the people present there were supporting clean elections and were very articulate in their support. So again, I want to thank you for this ongoing conversation, and I'm here today to just ask that we please put this on to the ballot so that we can have a greater conversation, include more people into the future of how we practice politics in Tempe. I am a clean elections candidate at the state level, and I can't speak for... I mean, I don't want to guess at how it's going to change, how politics happen in Tempe at the city council level, but I can speak from how it's impacted me at the legislature, how it's allowed me to focus more on my job. I can see my seatmates who duck out as soon as session's over because they have to start their campaigns again, raising money, and I get to take my time, meeting with constituents, building relationships with stakeholders. And what I've learned is that it really turns, returns elections back to a public good. And I can't imagine how we got so far away from thinking of elections as a privatized process, where we pretty much privatized the election process to wealthy, to moneyed interest. And with these clean elections, I am forced to build relationships with people in my community who don't know me. And it's a real endeavor to talk to people at their door and get them to fund your campaign, to make it a publicly funded campaign, so that they have an interest in not just what you're doing, but in why you're going there. It really puts the, I mean, the door to public offices at the front door of a constituent's house instead of, I mean, where everyone else has to go get money. And it really has changed my outlook on how I practice politics and what I think is possible. And I've learned that there are so many other things that we can ask of our constituents if we just gave them the agency, and I feel like this would give them a lot more power over how, over what issues we talk about, over how active they are involved in politics, over the kind of ownership they take in politics. Because right now, I can speak, from my experience, a lot of our constituents don't believe that the elections belong to them. And I think this would be a big step in showing them that we trust them and that they have the ability to affect their future. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alyssa Lyons. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
My name is Alyssa Lyons. I represent Valley Partnership, the advocate for responsible development throughout the valley. I live in what I consider to be North Tempe, South Scottsdale, 8649 East Holly Street. I'm here to discuss the Arts Master Plan. I really appreciate all of Shelley Hearn's work and all the stakeholders that were a part of that. We've made a commitment to Shelley, as we've met with her over the past few months, to stay engaged in the process, because there are a number of items that still need to be discussed and vetted. Those include the investment structure that is currently in place and improving that investment structure moving forward. There are a number of different models the consultants have brought forward, and we want to make sure that the art and private development elements are being properly funded and funded in a way that's attractive to the residents of Tempe. We also want to make sure that design is considered an element of art, and so we have spoken with a number of you about that. I think that there are some wonderful opportunities to integrate functional art and design elements that really improve the value of the project, not only for the development community, but also for the neighborhoods and surrounding areas. Wanted to just touch base with you, let you know that we are appreciative of Shelley's work, and will be engaged moving forward.
Thank you.
Bufford.
Buford, excuse me, I knew that. I mispronounced it. Ed. Buffalo, Bufford. Sorry.
Right. Buffalo, Bufford.
There you go. Tempe High.
Right. Well, this is a very interesting experience, and I really appreciate having the opportunity to be here. I didn't really know exactly how it works, so I really didn't expect to be called up already for something that's on the second page.
Come on down, Ed.
But I wanted to refer to, I think it's C-4?
Yeah, yes.
Regarding the discussions for possibly banning... My name's Ed Bufford from Tempe for 60 years, for banning the possible sale of dogs that are from puppy mills. I'd like to first distinguish that there may be people that are dog... Am I on the right thing?
No.
I'm talking, I meant to put for pet stores on the second page.
It's on the agenda. Go ahead. It is. It's under Items in Progress. Yes. It's on the agenda. You're good.
And I put it on the card there, right?
You did. You're good.
Then I can keep talking, okay?
Yes, you can. A little extra time.
Okay. Well, as you get into the different discussions, one of the things I'm sure you'll be hearing is people differentiating or attempting to differentiate between legitimate breeders and puppy mills. And one of the things that simply is a fact is that there, very conservatively, are 4 million dogs that are killed, euthanized if they're very, very sick and injured or vicious, but for the most part, they're killed because there's more, the supply is bigger than the demand. And nationwide, a conservative figure is 4 million. It's probably much higher, but that's a conservative figure. And a conservative figure for breeding and for puppy mills is between 1 and 2 million. So generally speaking, a shelter dog that somebody might have gone and got if they weren't buying a puppy from a puppy mills at a pet store, a shelter dog is going to be put to sleep. That's my main, number-one concern as far as my interest in this subject. But also, as you get into the discussion, you'll probably learn that there's atrocious treatment of the way that puppies are born and bred at puppy mills, and there's a lot of different issues to be concerned about regarding the health of the dogs as they do come into those stores. And I think it's just fantastic that the city of Tempe, who I think is as progressive as they come when it comes to, I think on that list that you have of the things that we're, Tempe should be known for, should actually have Protection of Animals or Animal-Friendly City on it, because you really are. And the TNR program that Colby and Cory worked on and others, I'm sure, is something that many other cities have not done. And several of the things that Tempe is doing, like talking about banning puppy mill puppies in pet stores, is just fantastic. I'm very proud to be a citizen of this city, because the entire council seems to care, actually care, about protecting and the humane treatment of our pets in this city. So I guess that's, that's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Sam Worsinski. Thought I saw him. Come on down, Sam.
"Price is Right." Playing Plinko. It was my favorite moment of the court, perhaps.
Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm Sam Worsinski. I'm a property owner here in Tempe. I do not reside or vote in here. However, as Executive Director for Arizona Advocacy Network, I speak on behalf of our Tempe members. First of all, we are very, very grateful for the work that you've put into this significant effort to vet Tempe clean and transparent campaigns. People across the state, even nationally, have focused in on what your discussion is vetting, and so I applaud you for investing the time in that. I've been following it myself. I know that there's disagreement on the benefits or the costs for the system, but clearly the benefits outweigh any perceived costs that might exist. First of all, we want to applaud you for listening to residents and changing the funding mechanism to something that is much broader, that is not considered regressive, and that also takes into consideration households who may be experiencing financial hardship with an opt-out provision. I think that's very insightful of where all of you, what your focus is, and that is Tempe residents. It's important to note that TCTC will reduce the barriers for your competitors to run for office. There's no doubt about that. However, what's really significant is that Tempe voters, registered citizens in Tempe, will be the ones who decide whether or not those qualified candidates actually receive public campaign financing. And Councilman Granville brought up a really valid point in the past, that in the last election, over 70% of the private money spent here in the city elections came from outside of the city limits. TCTC will give power back to the Tempe residents and voters. There's no doubt about it. In 2006, the State Supreme Court wrote in a decision that allowed a citizen's initiative to remain on the ballot. In their decision, they said, and this is so applicable to what is happening here today with your decision-making process, "There are clear benefits to allowing the public to vote on an initiative even though its validity may be questioned if it passes." And so there's a discussion about the validity of this system. The court went on to write, "In a democracy, the process itself is often as valuable as the result. A vote to enact legislation expresses more than a current whim of the people; it expresses the voter's preferred rule of governance."
Sam, your time is up.
Thank you.
Patrick Morales. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Welcome.
Patrick Morales, Tempe, Arizona, and I'm also on the Tempe Elementary School Board. And I wanted to say, when I first saw this pop up, I was very excited. I was happy. And then when I read the original version, I was not. But as I read the amended version, I would love to show my support for this, because as been, as been mentioned before, it definitely opens the door to different kinds of candidates, new kinds of candidates, younger candidates, et cetera. So personally, me, I'm a student, I'm young, I'm Latino, low income, et cetera, and that would not be possible in a traditional election for any other thing in the future. So I definitely wanted to show my support today and urge the council to let the voters decide and put this on the ballot, because I think it promotes democracy within the city especially.
Thank you. Ernesto Fonseca.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Ernesto Fonseca. I am a Tempe resident, and I am also running for a second time for Tempe City Council. I am here to speak on behalf of Clean Elections. I not only think it is a good idea to have clean elections as part of our system. Clean elections, as it is stated today, is not forcing anybody to take that money. It is only given an option. It is an option. So I think that is very, very important to state. It is an option for us to choose or not to choose to be part of that type of funding as candidates. The second piece that I already stressed earlier during the library forum is that when we're looking at candidates, I think it is important to look at candidates for their merit, their capacity to develop good policy, and their ability to really be passionate about our community, not necessarily to be a great fundraiser for the next foundation or anything that we can have in town. So when I'm looking at candidates, I'm looking for that, for that passion for the city, for that ability to develop good policy, and not necessarily for the ability to raise money. So I really, really encourage you to support this ordinance and allow the voters. At the end of the day, it is the voters that will decide whether Clean Elections goes to be part of the city political system or not. So I don't think, I don't think there's anything absolutely wrong with giving the people the ability to decide. If we live in a free democracy, I think that should be the case, and this is bringing to our attention, to all of us. So why shouldn't we just take it, embrace it, and let the rest decide? Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Palmer. Please come forward and state your name and place of residence for the record. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name's Tim Palmer. I'm a homeowner in Tempe. I just have a quick statement to read. I have some concerns regarding the issue of clean elections policy that could come to Tempe in the future. For the record, I'm in support of the idea of clean elections and an effective funding mechanism to launch Tempe clean elections. This needs to be placed on the ballot and face its voters passing or voters decline. Let me state, hesitation with democracy is just that, hesitation with democracy. Most folks can see and read between the lines if this policy item does not make it to the ballot and the reasons why. Are you really, are you willing to live with your vote, your no vote, to decline advancing this to the ballot? I was dismayed to learn of the letter of opposition from a large list of former mayors and council members, what a shocking list, insider list, of respected former elected officials whom do wish to suppress democracy. This is what my intuition is telling me about this. I firmly believe that this is classic let-the-voters-decide. As a council member and mayor whom was elected to office, you should completely understand that this is basic democracy. As I've written to you all in various emails, it is dangerous when the few dictate to the many. I firmly believe that clean elections reduces barriers and opens up the election process. Please do not deny the passionate voice. Do not make this about an implied litmus test to run for office. Denying any individual further opportunities to seek elected office is quite simply dangerous. I firmly believe that the city of Tempe should consider the reduction of campaign contribution limits to candidates whom decide to run a traditional-style campaign. Please establish a system that produces the possible leveling of the playing field for all who decide to run for elective office. Let's be clear, money opens doors and money closes doors, and this is all spelled by one word, influence. I'm not afraid of clean elections, nor should this council. We are all discussing the sanctity of American democracy, and this should not be taken lightly. Tempe is the crown jewel in Arizona. Continue that quest and advance clean elections to the ballot and let the voters decide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Sarr. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
David Sarr, Child's Play founding artistic director, and I'm at 618 West 11th Street. First, about the arts plan. I just first want to applaud the council and the staff and the steering committee that came up with this visionary document. They went over and beyond. They were asked to make a plan, and I think they've really given us a vision into the future. I was, I think, one of the, certainly wasn't the first, that was Rudy Turp, but one of the first members of the Tempe Arts Municipal Arts Commission. And reflecting back on where we have come in that time since, I think, sometime in the mid-'80s, to where we are now, is pretty amazing that Tempe Center for the Arts wasn't on my dreamscape at that time, and I think that this plan offers the opportunity for the same amount of growth into the future. Our ensemble, Child's Play's ensemble and board, want to thank the committee for the opportunity to participate in the creation of this document, and also look forward to working with them in actually implementing it. As the arts plan notes, we are a primary resident of Tempe Center for the Arts. We're in their 30% of the time. We are happy to share the remaining 70. We have learned to play well with others and would welcome the call for more and diverse programming in the arts center. The only proviso is I do have to remind you that Child's Play's schedule is not our own, but is determined by the schedule of the schools. In other words, when kids can come to the theater. Thanks again for charging the committee and getting the people together that have made this, made this possible, and I look forward to working with you all to make it a reality. Thanks.
Thank you, David. David Lucier. Please come forward and state your name and place of residence for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is David Lucier. I'm a resident of Tempe. I'm also a proud member of the Tempe Municipal Arts Commission, as well as the newly-formed Tempe Veterans Commission. So thank you all very much for those initiatives. And just a quick, quick positive note again on the new arts plan. It's just absolutely outstanding. It shows vision. It's exciting. But I actually came here to talk about the clean elections. So I just have a short statement, which I will read, and if you have any questions at the end of it, please let me know. About a year ago, a new study from Princeton University outlined some bad news for our American democratic experience, namely that the American democracy no longer exists. Researchers argued that over the past few decades, Americans, the American political system has slowly transformed from a democracy into an oligarchy. We're wealthy elites. We have most power. There are several dynamics at work here. One is incumbency, and the other's money. Both of these basic elements have been so manipulated that they've skewed the political landscape to the point that our national and state democracy is truly a thing of the past, with one minor exception. It is one of the last bastions of American democracy, and that is, it's the American municipality. municipality. It's Tempe, Arizona. Across the nation and across the state, incumbency has been skewed to the nth degree due to micro gerrymandering. We are now to the point where incumbents actually choose their voters versus voters choosing their candidates. Arizona is a prime example. Out of the nine congressional districts, we're down to one or two, which are still, I guess, considered competitive. Incumbents with large campaign contribution war chests can and do have an unbalanced advantage across the political spectrum. It's gotten so bad in Arizona, this state's become known as the Grand Cayman Island of dark money. The principle is very simple. The more money you pour into the mix, the more likely a positive outcome for those who contribute the most. So I would encourage this council to advance a clean elections initiative to the ballot. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Martinez. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence for the record.
My name is Michael Martinez. I'm actually a resident of Mesa, but I am the president of AmeriCorporation Young Democrats and was asked to come here to speak on behalf of many of our Tempe residents. So I would say that there was maybe a little issue with previous language, but now we are in full support of this amendment, amended ordinance. I think that something that we really should be considering is how clean elections does open up the playing field for a lot of people, especially a lot of your young constituents who have great ideas and should have the opportunity to run for office if they feel like that's their path in life. So I would like to say something that David also said was, we see an influx of dark money in this state, and clean elections kind of balances it out and kind of makes, like I said, the playing field equal. And so because of this, I would like to say that we fully support sending this to the ballot and letting the voters decide in March.
Thank you. Kelly Nelson. Please come forward and state your name and place of residence for the record.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Nelson, and I live in Tempe. I wear several creative hats in the community. I teach interdisciplinary studies at ASU. I am a volunteer docent at TCA, a published poet, but I'm here today as the chair of TMAC, the Arts Commission, to say that we strongly support the overall direction of the Arts and Culture Plan. And as requested by the consultants, we put together a list of priorities, many of which appear on their list of priorities on page 10 in the report. And the town hall meeting in February was thrilling. TCA was overflowing with people who wanted to talk about arts and culture in Tempe. And I was one of the facilitators at a table, and once, twice, three times, the table filled with people who wanted to talk about arts and culture in this community. And I left TCA that night completely jazzed. So thank you, thank you, for spearheading this community planning process. TMAC is excited, and we're looking forward to moving forward.
Thank you, Kelly. And it was a great public hearing, or public meeting. A lot of people there. John Simon. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence for the record, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is John Simon. I'm a student here at ASU, living on campus. It's my second time speaking to you all, so it's a privilege to be here. Just want to kind of touch on a couple of things from my perspective as a student. You know, speaking with some of my peers, which I do frequently, we don't feel like we have a voice in the political system, and that's on all levels of government. When we look at clean elections, we find that with a clean election system, voter turnout is higher because voters feel like their voice actually counts. They don't feel like the politicians are being influenced as much by the big businesses, obviously. So from a student's perspective, I feel more inclined to get involved in the political system as a voter if there is a clean election system. And my hope is that when and if Tempe passes this clean elections ordinance, that other cities in the valley, you know, Phoenix, Glendale, will adopt similar systems, and hopefully that will help to strengthen the clean election statewide.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address this, but any items listed on the agenda? I don't have any other cards. If you need my attention now. Seeing none, I will close that portion of our meeting, and I will go to item number two on our agenda, which is the 2A, the Arts Master Plan. And I want to have Shelley, John Kane, and our consultants come forward. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Shelley Hearn, Community Services Director. Tonight, we're here to present to you the final draft of the Tempe Arts and Culture Plan. The plan contains 54 recommendations. It's been about a year-long process. A lot of those recommendations are, will be easy to incorporate into some of our ideas moving forward. Some will be things that evolve over time or may never happen, but they are recommendations. Several of these items need further exploration and discussion with some of the stakeholders that would come back to you at a future meeting for discussion. But the plan's a roadmap, and it's a guide for us to move arts forward, and the plan's intended to be reviewed on an annual basis by the Arts Commission, and we will continue to work on it and update it as we go along. What we're asking from council tonight is if there are components of the recommendations that you would like to add or change or see discussed a little bit further before we move forward, and then we will bring it back to you at a future meeting for consideration for adoption. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Kane, who's a co-chair of our steering committee, and he'll talk a little bit about the process.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Yeah, I had the wonderful opportunity to co-chair this with Joe Livingston, and along with an amazing steering committee, and I think a lot of them are here. Could you all raise your hands? We really, really appreciate their efforts, and along with staffs. And I have to say, Shelley was just awesome to work with, along with everybody else, to move this forward. But we're really excited about this plan, and I think you've heard. We want to also point out that if you approve this, that, and we hope you do, that the steering committee, and many of us on the steering committee, would like to help move this forward, continue the conversation, and help in the implementation. And I think even beyond the steering committee, in terms of the members of the community, I think over 600 that replied to the survey and 300 that showed up to the town halls have expressed interest in being involved to advance this. So there's a lot of excitement in the community about this. With that, I'd like to pass it over to Jerry and David, our cultural arts planners, for their presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm David Pledner Saunders, one of the consultants working on the development of the Tempe Arts and Culture Plan. It's my role tonight to do a very brief presentation. We're well aware that you've had individual meetings with members of the steering committee, you've had a chance to read the plan. So we'll do just a short deck, 12 slides, to provide an overview of the content of the plan and a little bit about the process, and also to provide the public present here this afternoon with a basic understanding of what's in the plan. And beyond that, Jerry and I are here to answer any questions and help facilitate any discussion you'd like to have about this draft plan. So are you able to see the slides on your computer? Yeah. Yeah, okay. So this is the original purpose statement that we were charged with. No, I'm sorry. I didn't realize, I didn't know if you needed a moment. This is the original purpose statement we were charged with at the start of the planning process. And when I say "we," I mean not just the consultants, but the steering committee and staff. So it's a master plan, strategies to enhance current arts and cultural programs in a community that always, already has extraordinarily strong arts and cultural programs, but also to identify opportunities to increase the arts and cultural profile both within the city and the region. And that, to me, was the most interesting part. Tempe is an aspirational community, and it's right there in the initial charge for development of the plan. Here's a list of specific goals. Some of them are process goals, some of them are content or issues that needed to be addressed in the plan. So for example, we were asked to look at what kinds of arts and cultural program in the community was interested in. We were asked to investigate how individual artists could be better supported, to enhance the role of the TCA, we'll talk more about that later in the presentation, and to look at the Metropolitan Arts Commission, Municipal Arts Commission, and examine how it could become a more effective leadership body. We were also last asked to look at the city governance structure, how the city organizes internally to support and lead the arts, and of course, sustainable arts funding. Ken's wonderful financial forecasts highlighted the issues. In the next three to five years, there are financial potential red ink that needed to be addressed. And we also, beyond that, wanted to be able to make recommendations that would place the next 20 years of Tempe's arts life and its municipal role in the arts on a firm As Kelly and John both mentioned, there was extensive community engagement. As you know, perhaps the marquee event was the town hall at the Lakeside Room at the TCA. It was a wonderful town hall. It was a lot of energy and a tremendous number of good suggestions. In addition, we had individual interviews and discussion groups throughout the community with stakeholders and, you know, regular folks who expressed interest in culture and their neighborhood. We did an online community survey, and there was an online comment forum, your Tempe Forum What did this lead to? We were asked to develop the vision statement, and Tempe articulated a very aspirational, bold vision. The entire text of it is printed on the page four of your plan, but it is quite comprehensive. Let's look at what some of the key findings of this community engagement were. What do people want to see more of? The first couple of bullets are interesting. People want informal experiences and art in everyday life. Tempe is a community that values what I think of as the red velvet seat in the concert hall, buying a ticket to show up at 8:00 for a symphony concert or for a jazz performance. But in addition, people increasingly like informal performances in a park or at a cafe or a coffee shop. They want to bump into public art in unexpected places on the street or in their neighborhoods. Tempe already has that. They want to see more of it. They also talked about programming that meets more of the broad interest of the adult audience here in Tempe, better quality and variety of programming available to them, particularly at the TCA, things that were more affordable, and of course, youth arts. Tempe is a community that already has strong youth arts programs. Virtually every household in Tempe that has children has kids who participate in the arts either in school or after school. But what we heard was a desire for enhanced programming, arts learning that is sequential, comprehensive, and takes kids to a place where they own their own creativity, whether they ever become artists themselves or not. Beyond what people would like to see more of, the community expressed a desire for certain characteristics in its cultural future, diversity and inclusion, a value that the city already holds as a core value and invests in, active citizen involvement. This is an interesting point. We did not hear from the community, "City, spend more, give us more." Rather, we heard that people wanted to be involved in the development of the cultural future of Tempe in a whole variety of ways. They want to be active participants. You've seen it expressed in John's statement about the desire of steering committee members, not to finish and get on with their lives, but to continue their involvement in arts leadership. And there are a number of specific ways the plan provides for them to take leadership roles now in implementation of the plan. We heard that people wanted to not just attend cultural programming, but be actively involved in creating it or designing it or helping to fund it. We heard from the business leadership of the community, they were interested in taking a leadership role and a financial role in the arts future of Tempe. So in addition to this active engagement, this desire to be a part of shaping the cultural future, we also heard about reviving Tempe's live music scene. It has been extraordinary in the past. There's been a wonderful exhibit at the History Museum about Tempe's clubs and musicians and bands, and people would like to see that revitalized. We heard about the desire to support artists. People recognize that artists and creative professionals are the heart of any arts community and need to be recognized and supported in some additional ways. And then, of course, activities in South Tempe. You know, Tempe is big enough and has enough traffic now that the drive time from south to downtown has become a barrier for certain kinds of activities. So what does the plan actually contain? There are six focus areas of the plan, and these correspond quite closely with the original goals for the plan, what the plan was to be about. So we're not going to walk through, obviously, all of the recommendations, but as Kelly Nelson mentioned, we went through a prioritization exercise with an early draft of the plan. It was vetted by the community at large. There was an online comment period. It was vetted by the steering committee, of course, a couple of times, the Arts Commission at a couple of meetings, and by staff, and at another town hall. So there was a lot of opportunity to digest the contents of the plan and to say what they thought was the most important, and that's what I'm going to show you here. We have two slides of community priorities. These are not in priority order, but these do represent the community/stakeholders' sense of what they would like to see as the most important things and the things that are tackled first. So you can see expansion of the public art program and the arts grants program, and making funding more available to neighborhood groups, individuals in the community, and community-based organizations. That is, small funding on the grassroots level to allow people to shape cultural activities on their own terms and in their own neighborhoods. Also, the need for affordable artist-livework space. Mesa just completed a study. There's very strong demand for artist-liv-work. These are projects that can pencil out, that can pay for themselves, and we've recommended the exploration of a project in Tempe with a nonprofit developer of artist spaces that can make this affordable and doable. Second slide here, enhancing the programming at the TCA to better meet the cultural interests of all Tempe citizens. We think that the TCA is not only an extraordinary facility and a representation of the aspiration that Tempe has had for some decades now for artistic excellence, but it's also, the TCA staff have done an extraordinary job in making this a vital facility. It's been limited in some ways by the policies, the mission statement and the policies that govern it, and we recommend opening these up so that cultural programming can better represent the diverse interests of Tempe's residents. We've also, as you know, recommended reauthorization of the arts tax when it sunsets in five years, and again, in the financial arena, the creation of a business committee for the arts. This is already kind of a ball in motion with the Northern Trust's initial contribution to the TCA. We've also had several recommendations about enhancing urban design and architectural standards, and I know that one of the reasons John is here and Jerry, so that we can discuss that if you do have questions about it. And lastly, we made some recommendations about the internal governance and structure of the arts within city government as well. And I think with that, we'll move to questions and discussion. Happy to clarify any of the points that I've just made.
And thank you. And I want to thank all the residents involved in this process and John Kane for chairing this program. I think it's very clear that this is a I think it's very clear that this is a top priority for our community. I was engaged in a lot of the discussions with all of you, and I attended the meeting which I thought was fabulous and is a good representation of our community, where you have over 150 people plus involved in that discussion at the town hall that Kelly mentioned earlier, because it truly, I get goosebumps talking about it, because that truly is representative of our community and how we go out and we engage our community. So I want to thank all those involved. And I really like some of the priorities you had on clarifying the governance structure and the vision. I think that's important, as well as clarifying the role of Administrative Arts Commission and some others that you recommend as also creating opportunities for young artists. I think that's vital, to engage in our community. I really want to thank all of you for what you've done. And right now, Councilmember Granville?
Yeah, I agree. To reiterate what the mayor said, I think it was just a great turnout by residents. It showed a lot of, a broad support across a lot of different groups in the city, as well as a lot of different ages and a lot of different interests. You know, I went into this, I'll be the first to say a little bit skeptical. I thought that it was sort of a setup to ask for more money as the arts tax sunset. And what I found was that it wasn't a setup to ask for more money, it's a setup to ask for an entirely new way of doing business and looking at the arts. And so I was really excited to see what this ended up being, because it was not my initial expectation, because I think there is a different approach that needs to be done, and I think this really encapsulates it. I'm going to save my comments, because I actually just went through the, as I'm sure we all probably did some version of this, just went through it with a red, green, yellow highlighter and was like, "Love this, don't like this, okay with this." But there's two things I just want to point out that I thought were really great. One is the desire to bring sort of spot art programming to South Tempe more, because there's this idea of if you don't have the building, then you can't have the arts. And for everyone who lives south of baseline or south of Southern or whatever street you want to pick in South Tempe, there is a desire to do something, maybe not always the traditional building thing, and I think to the extent you can incorporate it to the entire city, that's outstanding. The only thing that I was, and I've mentioned this to you all before, so it won't be a surprise, is there's this discussion of we need to bring music back to Mill Avenue, and I, you know, Councilmember Navarro's done a lot for that, as well as other council members on council. The difficulty, though, is a simple one. The rents aren't what they were 30 years ago. And so you can't, a small bar with a small stage cannot exist on Mill Avenue. It just financially, the rents, the square footage doesn't exist the way it did 30 years ago. And so the thing that I, I understand this is a starting point, but I hope the ending point of this document is to try and figure out the role that the city can and should play in making that math work, because the only way you get new, young, interesting bands to become big headlining bands is to have them in a place that doesn't exist anymore. And so I would love to see something besides the Yucca Tap Room, which is great, but I'd like to see something else also get a band that maybe doesn't get radio play.
May I come?
Yeah, please do.
I really appreciate your observation about how things have changed since the '70s and the '80s when the scene was more active. It still is active, it's just active in a different way. And the way forward, we think, there's several different tactics that we suggested in the plan, but I think the main thing is if council says, "We'd like to see more live music in Tempe," removing some barriers and just providing some encouragement, I think you'll see investors come forward. It may not be in Mill Avenue, but I think you might very well see also groups of millennials come forward with the social enterprise model. I think there are a lot of ways to get it done and a lot of locations it could happen in.
Just to add on to that, we've, you know, actually, you know, this council, I'm the supporter of this council for live music in downtown Tempe, and I know we've been doing some creative things with the DTA, and even waiving fees to have live music. We require restaurant owners to pay a certain fee for a lifetime, and we've actually waived those fees for certain periods, and it's been very key on that. And then also, reducing the fees on the streets, they were ridiculous. And those are the barriers that we can do as a city, and I know we can do a lot more. Very passionate about this, believe me, I am very passionate about this. And I think it is something that really puts Tempe on the map. We are in a great area. We have musicians in this area, we have kids coming up that want to be musicians or play instruments, and we have the ability to showcase that. And not only in downtown Tempe, but I'm talking all over Tempe. But I think this is a great starting point. I think also with your guys is just the involvement. I mean, we went to the meetings and stuff, but the involvement, it was a community involvement. I mean, this is passionate for people and stuff, and it's one of those things that arts are very hard to fund, you know, obviously throughout the country. To break even's great, to break even's great, and to make a profit, wow, you know, that's incredible. And we reward you guys for really looking into this thing, because it's something that we have to have as a community. It is a must. And I think that the support that you saw there shows that priority. There's two things that, you know, really came to mind, you know, we were talking about the arts, is the fact that we can use arts to help improve our city. You know, I always, you know, complain about our right-of-way walls and stuff and how deteriorating they are, but art is a way that we can actually improve that area. We can use arts to make an artistic wall, take Mill Avenue, for instance, between Alameda and Southern. You could actually incorporate art through that area and enhance that area with that vision. The other thing is we have these ugly APS and SRP boxes everywhere, and they're horrible. I've just been talking with APS, and now they're very considerable about doing, letting us do our own decorative surrounding on it. Now we can do an art surrounding around those boxes. SRP has allowed us to paint those boxes, and we paint our boxes too, and it was in one of the slides over there. So it really is expanding and opening up those doors even more, but I appreciate your guys' work, and I think there's a lot of things we can do off that, for sure.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Mayor, I just really want to say something echoing a point that Councilman Navarro just made. And I had the opportunity, along with Councilman Granville, to actually go and sit at some of the tables at TCA, and I actually went to every single table and listened to at least part of the discussion. And I tried to not, for those who are familiar with the Heisenberg Uncertainty Principle, I tried to avoid that, that's the act of changing something by measuring it. So I tried to be like as quiet and like a mouse as I can, although it's very difficult at 6'5", 300 pounds. But I went around each table and I heard a lot of great input from, as the mayor said, a great cross-section of our community. But the point I want to drive home is one that Councilman Navarro just made, and that is, you know, when it comes to the arts in a city, and I made this to a couple of you as I've met with some of you throughout the last couple of weeks, you know, when it comes to arts in a city, I think a city can really be judged by the quality of the arts that are offered in that community. And so to me, there is a value there, an intrinsic value there that's so important not to overlook. And so like Joel said, if we can make a profit, if a business can make a profit, if the city can make a profit, if TCA can turn a profit, that's incredible. If we break even, that's equally as good. I see this as a value expense, and I'm okay if, at the end of the day, TCA isn't turning a profit for the city. I think it's something that's incredibly important to invest in, and I am appreciative of this plan. I think this plan reflects that sort of value. And I just wanted to echo Councilman Navarro's point that this is, you know, it's not necessarily meant to be a moneymaker, it's a culture maker, and it's worth investing in the culture of our city.
Councilmember Adona Savage?
Just really quick, and these guys have said a lot of really wonderful things too, and I certainly agree with everything that's been said, but I do want to say one thing that people may not know. You guys worked really, really hard to be able to not only get the feedback from that public meeting, but you actually went to different groups and organizations, and you guys met and met and met, and your days were packed. And I just want to say, that is really appreciated. I really do thank you so much to be able to take all that feedback and work through it and be able to create this document. And of course, thank you to John and Joe and the steering committee, because it wouldn't have happened without you guys and your passion for what you do and the desire to really elevate the arts in Tempe. So I love the idea of this document. I've had a chance to talk to Shelley so many times about it and, you know, kind of sift through it, so it's not about yes, no, love it, don't love it. I think there's a lot of really valuable things in there. I love the idea that you actually reached out, in fact, the mayor and I were just at Tempe Union last night at an event, and they were pleading about how they're really having a lot of success in some of their programs, I think it was the orchestra. But they've had so many kids, but they don't have enough instruments. And to be able to identify some of those challenges and gaps, to be able to create the synergy out there in the community, I think is really important. And that's exactly what I see this document doing, is really being able to get us on a good path moving forward, but creating synergy within that culture of Tempe. So I think of it as a serious part of our quality of life in the city of Tempe and a great value. And I think this is just going to help us kind of keep it organized and keep us on the same page and moving forward. So I think it's really great. I appreciate the work of everybody, for you guys, Shelley. I know this has kind of been time-intensive for you, so thank you for everything that you have done. I really appreciate it. I'm excited, because I think it's just going to bring all of those valuable resources within the community, and maybe something that we do directly, but others do, to be able to bring that together. So I think it's a wonderful thing, so thank you for that.
Councilmember Kiwi?
Thank you. Yes, please. And I just really love the mindset that the arts are for everyone, not for privilege few, and I appreciate you're looking at other populations and to make sure that Tempe, the arts are for everyone in Tempe. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is our Rio Salado Foundation update. Kim Nader, from the Rio Salado Foundation, please come forward.
Thank you. Shelley's going to sit with me to answer any questions. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Hello, mayor, council, and city manager. My name is Kim Nader, I'm the executive director of the Rio Salado Foundation. I'm here this evening to give you an update on two of our projects, and on behalf of our board of directors, we want to say we have a certificate of occupancy at Isandra House. So a long, 10-year, five-year-in-funding project, and it is coming to, the restoration is complete. And in my report, we basically are reporting the opening weekend, we'll do a fundraiser on a Friday night, you have the dates in front of you. Many people in the community are involved in that fundraiser. It will be an opportunity to unveil the house. It's not open to the public until that evening. And then during the weekend of the 21st and 22nd, it'll be a two-day open house to the public. We'd like to see 500 to 1,000 people come and visit and actually see what the Isandra Center for Water Conservation has to offer. We have two wonderful things side by side here. We have a restored historic iconic home that is a jewel for Tempe and for the partnership between Rio Salado Foundation and the city to restore it is a wonderful feat. I think Tempe leads with historic preservation properties, and so I thank you for being, going along with us on this, as well as the Water Conservation Center. The potential there is huge, and I think that that's another feather in the hat for Tempe to have a dedicated center for water conservation. So we're excited about it. We're moving forward with and working with Public Works, Don Vessler and Community Services' Shelley Hearn, to develop the MOU to where we will manage the special event venue and visitor center. There's quite a bit of work to be done to get that place up and running in that instance. And we believe that we have a model that's a lot of historic sites where you have a partnership and actually a special event run separately. Any questions on that? Please ask me. We're also entering into agreement, the Rio Salado Foundation will have an office there at Isandra House, which will give us more of an anchor position to continue our fundraising. So very excited about it, and hope you'll take these dates, put them in your calendars, and especially for the weekend, we will do a series of dedications and ribbon cuttings, and we're going to do a tribal blessing, and so the council will be invited to attend all of those the week prior. If you'd like to see, have a private tour, just let me know, and we can walk through it. It's not open, it's, basic construction is finished. We're going to cover up the walls on the first floor, or the windows on the first floor and the doors, so no one can peer in and see. When we unveil it on November 20th, it will be a beautiful home that's filled with period furniture, and then it will become a visitor center and an education center. So very happy to have it completed.
Yeah, this is a long time in coming.
Very long.
Yes. Councilmember Adona Savage?
I would just say, congratulations, because I know this has just been a labor of love and being able to get that funding to be able to get to where you are today. So thank you to you and the team and everybody that's really been working hard. I know it hasn't been an easy task, but how exciting. I mean, what another great opportunity, I think, for the city, for the residents, to be able to go see some history, have a great event there. I think it's going to be really wonderful. So, and I know, one of the things I just wanted to say was, I know you're going to be moving forward with the IGA, we haven't seen the details of that yet. And one of the things that we've been talking about and we've done in the past, it would be really great if there's some way that we could work in, maybe some opportunities for the city to be able to utilize that on occasion, maybe once a month.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just didn't see that in here anywhere, so I just thought I'd bring that up, because I think that would be really great. Maybe we could do a retreat there, we have a community meeting there, whatever it may be, it would be nice to be able to incorporate some opportunities, I think, with like that.
Absolutely. And I'm happy to show you now, before it gets into its next phase, but when you, if you're there on the 20th or on the 21st, 22nd, or prior to that, you'll be able to see what the potential is.
Again, thank you.
Oh, sure, thank you.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to echo some of Robin's comments in terms of a great thanks for this project. I think it's an important one, and it's one that I'm sure you're well aware is an important one to the Jewish community in Tempe, given the history of the Isandra family and of that house in particular. I just wonder, is there, and I know Councilwoman Kiwi and others have been involved, is there any, has there been any outreach or any work alongside the Arizona Jewish Historical Society in terms of maybe for the opening or for a portion of the exhibit? I'd love to hear about some of that.
We've contracted with a professional museum-quality interpretive display consultant. She's worked on several historic sites, and the research, along with a group, the Tempe Historic Preservation Foundation, which is our docent group that will run these, we are doing several interpretive display stories to be told about Rose, the reason why she came to the valley, the reason why she built the house itself. So yes, there's a lot of history there, and it will be one of those highlighted stories that are told about the discrimination in the valley at that time. The true story is, is that during this time, in the '20s, the valley was populated because wealthy individuals could not go to Europe any longer because of the threat of the war. So they started coming to the valley and winter visitors, and so you, when you visit the home, you will get a full history of what was happening at the time, why all of these locations were built or people came here from certain places. And the Jewish story, the discrimination story, is a huge part of the whole existence, why it exists.
Are you working with the Jewish Historical Society?
Yes, we are.
Oh, okay. And is Stu Seifer involved?
Stu Seifer is very involved. He's on the board of the Tempe Historic Preservation Foundation. He's with that group, they're our partners in the fundraiser, he's cash-sponsored to the fundraising event, yes, he's very involved. And we're getting lots of information. There's been a group, the Tempe Historic Preservation Foundation's basically mission was established to do the historic tours for the house and do all of that. So all of that developed research is all being put into some wonderful things. We are doing the interpretive displays in phases. It costs money to install those, and so some of the fundraising that we're doing will continue to, and it'll be a changing exhibition space, and the stories will evolve as we...
I just want to know, and I'm sure Stu can connect you in the same way that I can, we're both on that board of the Jewish Historical Society, but they've done a really excellent job of collecting an oral history of Jews in the valley since, you know, early 1900s. And I think he may be able to connect you with some of those resources as well, if he hasn't already.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you, thank you. I'm going to move on to my second report.
Yeah, please, real quick.
Sure. I'm sorry, Lauren, excuse me. I just want to talk to my colleagues about, in addition to the historical opportunities in highlighting our Tempe history, there's the water conservation aspect, and there's going to be a lot of opportunities to have demonstrations for residents about possible gray water conversion of their homes and rainwater harvesting, and every possible kind of water rebate would be, and tree planting workshops will be available. So I think it's a lot of opportunities for that, too. So thanks so much, I'm very excited about the twin elements of history and water conservation. Thank you.
Past and future. Kim?
Okay, we're going to move on to the Arizona Boathouse and Welcome Center. Our second project, once we wrap up Isandra, we go full force into the capital campaign for the Boathouse and Welcome Center. Here are conceptual drawings that you can see on the screen, there are four different versions, and this conceptual drawing probably took us about a year to develop. And this conceptual drawing probably took us about a year to develop. We worked closely with the City of Tempe Bodie and Recreation staff and to make sure that we were creating form and function in a boathouse that would be used by hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people on an annual basis. We're excited about it. It's a five, 4.5 to $5 million project. We're in the silent phase. We have approximately 1.2 million secured, several asks out. I wanted to bring to light that we currently do not have a DDA on this project with the City of Tempe, and the reasons being is that we had an RFP and a DDA that we really allowed to let expire. And so I wanted to explain to the council what that really meant. In meeting with the city manager and others, we decided that it really was to the best interest that we let this DDA expire. It was created in 2008 by another construction company, and so much time has gone by. We need a fresh, new bid. We will have an opportunity to go to a different builder. And so all of those things are in the work. Our next step is to have Davis Design create the architectural drawings, and then we'll really know what our costs are. I say 4.5, 4.525 million. We feel confident that this campaign, we've launched it, we've got some good prospects, a lot of corporate development around the lake, and believe me, those are the targets. So we will actively pursue that in the next 12 months, and hopefully we'll have a boathouse in 24 months. So, any questions on the boathouse?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks very much.
All right. Next item is our holiday display regulations. Ms. Inchowski.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Rosa Inchowski, City of Tempe Judiciary Director. Good evening. Last December, we had received a request from Rabbi Rimler to have a display of the menorah at City Hall and Tempe Beach Park. And that's why I'm here today. We were not able to find a policy within our organization. We have a practice of having a display on A-Mountain, or as we recall to, as a youth preserve display, but we do not have a policy within the organization. And we wanted to make sure that we received some consideration, or at least had the mayor and council have some consideration and review of this, per the request of the rabbi. During that time, thanks to Judy Baumann and Andrew, we were able to offer the free speech zone at the library, and Rabbi was very pleased with that. Due to the timeline of the request, we didn't have enough time to bring it to the mayor and council at that time. So now, as promised to be a community member, we wanted to bring it back to the mayor and council to ask first and foremost if you would like a policy to reflect the practice that we do have on A-Mountain, to continue that tradition, or if you would like us to also include any of the other requests that have been made to our office.
And I think, I mean, I guess if we need to solidify it, the proposal that we have the menorah as well as the cross and the three wise men on A-Mountain is a good one. And if you want to have further discussions, that's fine as well. Councilmember Granville.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it seems what we've been doing has been working, so I don't know any reason to change it. The only concern I would have is if something's not written down, it provides pretty shaky ground to say no when someone tries to abuse that system, that generosity. And so I would say, to the extent you can, you know, just work, I don't even think we necessarily need to be a part of it, in my opinion, but if you can just work with legal to make sure that we're providing, you know, what we're, we should and what we're required to do in the way of access, and then solidify that into a policy, I would just, it's far better to have the policy in place before somebody makes a request that, you know, that sends everything into hysterics.
Councilmember Shapiro.
Thank you, Mayor. I really want to hear Rosa try to pronounce the organization which the rabbi represents.
I knew you were going to ask that.
I'm on it.
I knew you were going to say that.
All right, let me hear it. Chabad house. That was pretty good. You need more "ch" in your "chabad."
That was the first thing that caught me.
Chabad.
Close enough, though?
Chabad. That was pretty good.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, I actually ironically did some case law research on this issue a couple years ago for a project that I was working on. And I think it would be worth having the city attorney look at some of the case law that's out there. There actually was, I believe, a U.S. Supreme Court case on secular versus non-secular religious symbols, and they actually drew a distinction, believe it or not, between like a Christmas tree versus an nativity scene, or a menorah versus, you know, the Paschal Lamb at Passover, or something along those lines. So I just think it'd be worth looking at some of that case law, because there's, there are cities, and I believe the case law was actually about a municipal building. There are cities that have been down this path already, and I think if we kind of use that as a guide, it might be helpful in crafting the policy. And just as an FYI, Hanukkah is one of the least important holidays on the Jewish calendar. So if we're looking for equal time, it's actually in the next few weeks during the High Holy Days, Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur. And the menorah is really no more a religious symbol than the Star of David is. It's a symbol of one of our holidays where they tried to kill us, they failed, and so we celebrate it and drink wine.
What else is there?
And then we have Yom Poshua, which is they tried to kill us, they succeeded, and then we drink wine again. But really, our religious holidays are the Jewish High Holy Days and Shabbat. Those are our most religious days. So the menorah, to me, is not as big an issue, and it's really a secularized Jewish symbol because it's really not related to any religious component.
Councilmember Hernando Savage?
I did.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I think that's totally fine. I think Councilmember Granville's got, you know, it's not broken. I think we don't really need to fix it, but I think if we could look at it and maybe firm it up a little bit, so there is some consistency and people are aware of it, that's totally fine. And if we want to incorporate some other, you know, just look at it. I'm good with that.
Andrew.
Just so I understand, the direction then is that we'd like, the council would like us to go back and sort of memorialize in writing what we currently do in practice. Okay.
Unless it's illegal, then fix it.
Exactly. You just want to make sure what we're doing is...
Yeah. We have to caveat that we will have the city attorney's office review it for, to make sure that we can legally exclude or include whatever it is that we currently do.
The Colbees?
Meaning that, right, meaning that, that as it stands right now, and the reason why we talked to the member of the community who wanted to have the display in December was because there is no policy or practice in place that allows for permanent displays, free speech activity to take place within the City Hall campus. And if that's the case, and if you're comfortable with keeping that as a place where there isn't, we have other places where there is. For instance, we, yeah, right, we directed him to the library, which we do have designated free speech zone.
That's fine.
So that's, I just want to make sure that's, that's something that the group is comfortable with.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Great, thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is our Community Development Block Grant Funding Opportunities.
It'll be a certain legal term until you figure out that one.
Naomi? Mr. Heady? Ms. Farrell, Mr. Heady?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Naomi Farrell, Human Services Director.
Craig Heady, Human Services and Housing and Revitalization Manager.
In April, staff brought forward to council the proposed 2015 activities to be funded through the Community Development Block Grant. During this discussion, mayor and council requested additional information about the CDBG program, as well as a historical review of previous activities funded.
Go ahead. They're good.
Okay. Funded with CDBG. We will be presenting this information to you this evening. We are also seeking from council initial guidance and direction on funding priorities in preparation of the 2016 funding recommendations the staff will bring to council in early March. I'm going to turn over the floor to Mr. Heady.
Terrific. Thank you. So just with a little bit of background, the BlockRec program finds its initiation through Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. It's an annual formula grant, meaning it's not a competitive grant. It's an entitlement grant program available to cities with excess of 50 folks in the population, urban counties with more than 200,000. So we don't apply for the funds every year. We receive them as an entitlement. Prior to receiving the funds, though, we are required to submit and have an approved five-year plan, and then submit annual action plans as to our priorities for our funding. The primary objective of the Community Development CDBG program is to develop viable urban communities, principally for low and moderate income persons, through the creation of decent housing and suitable living environment and expanded economic opportunities. And prior to selecting any of the activities to fund, they all must meet a national objective to be eligible. The national objective can be broken down into three separate categories. The first being benefiting low and moderate income persons, the second being the removal of slum and blight conditions, the third, addressing an urgent need in the community. As an example, the low and moderate income definition for CDBG means falling below the 80% of the area median income, which is determined by HUD annually and is always based on the number of folks that are in the household. So the larger number of the household, the higher the income limit for that particular family. And CDBG breaks it down by 80% of the median income. The 50% that is also part of that table is the threshold or the maximum for a family to be eligible for, say, Section 8 assistance. With respect to benefiting low mod housing, to meet the national objective, the housing structures have to be occupied, obviously, by low and moderate income households. Easy enough when you've got a single structure, a single-family home, the unit has to be occupied by a low and moderate income family. Similarly, with a duplex, one of the two units must be occupied, and with three or more units, at least 51% of all the units must be occupied by low and moderate income The low and mod overall benefit requirement requires that at least 70% of the CDBG expenditures are used to benefit low and moderate income persons. You can use a cumulative approach, meaning in one to three years, if one of the three years you've sort of had a large projects for demolition that requires you to use a slum and blight as your national objective, and that, that accounts for 50% of your expenditures, you can make up for that with combining your three years total, as long as that number exceeds 70%, you're okay. Just jumping to the number of activities that are possible to fund with CDBG, assuming they've met one of the primary, or the national objectives. Real property activities are bread and butter, primarily are acquisition and rehabilitation, which includes our emergency recap program, reconstruction, clearance and demolition, and accessibility modification. Funding can also be used for economic development activities, such as job creation for low and moderate income households and technical assistance to micro enterprise. Public services, public services is limited to the 50% maximum of one year's entitlement. Those funds are usually piggybacked or have been piggybacked on the agency review process every year for the selection of those activities. Funding can also be used for the public facilities. As an example, infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, sewer facilities, neighborhood facilities as well, including parks and playgrounds, and facilities for special needs, such as homeless shelters, senior centers, and group homes. And there's also a maximum 20% set aside for planning and administration annually. Regulations specifically prohibit using the funds for buildings of conduct of government, examples, city hall improvements, general government expenses, such as trash collection, political activities, new housing construction, with the exception of funding used for public facilities like a homeless shelter or senior center. Typically, what we'll do is, we can use the money for acquisition, for the acquisition of the land, and then the construction of the housing on top of the land is a separate activity, so it becomes eligible that way. And funding cannot be used for operating and maintaining expenses, which comes into play, too, if you're, you're actually using the money for a public facility. It's important to remember that maintaining a public facility can't be charged to CUBG. The public participation process is pretty intense with respect to both our CDBG programs and our home programs. We just completed our five-year annual plan, our consolidated plan, in April. And during that process, we had three focus groups that were conducted, the community need survey, conducted online, one public meeting, and two public hearings. In addition, a 30-day public comment period is posted for folks to comment on the actual draft and funding priorities that are outlined in the annual plan. And then each year, we are required to submit an annual action plan, which basically outlines one of those five years, what we intend to do with the priorities or how we tend to prioritize our funding for that year. Similarly, there's a public meeting, two public hearings also, and also another 30-day public comment period for that draft.
Councilmember Kiwi.
Absolutely. And thanks for meeting with me earlier this week to talk about, to talk about this, but I have a question that didn't occur to me at our previous meeting, and that is, who attends the public meetings? Because in often the most vulnerable populations, you're not going to necessarily see them represented at the table, even though they're the most impacted by the decision. So are there clients that are there and present at those meetings, or is it advocacy organizations? Can you describe what the typical public input might be?
It's difficult to put that. The public meeting essentially is the work-study session or IRS meeting. So the folks that would be attending that meeting are any one of the council meetings for during the public hearing process. It's not a separate meeting. It's actually this meeting we're having right now. And then we'll have a similar one in March.
Right. So, but the public focus group meetings?
Oh, I'm sorry. The focus group meetings were held at the library by our consultants, part of consolidated plan. It was folks that were actually benefited from the assistance, all of our nonprofit partners, any stakeholders, banks, anybody that related to...
So might you see a homeless individual attend? I mean, would that be a common?
We actually did.
In one case?
Actually, we had three public meetings, and I think the homeless were represented in two of those three meetings that day, actually.
Because I think it's really important to, I mean, it's, it's obviously a recruitment issue, but, you know, some people who are in need of services may not have a home, they may not have a computer, they may not, you know, have access to the information. It's really important to reach out and bring the vulnerable populations to the table. And there's going to be some, there's going to be clients that need to be there, but there are also people that, for some reason, didn't get services. Maybe they're on the next rung, maybe they need to, or maybe they're not aware of what is available to them, so...
Well, and with this year, actually, we'll have improved input, because as part of the 30-day public comment period, we post, we post that notice in our offices, and our office is now being located in the library on the second floor, and everywhere throughout the library, those notices, and there's outreach working out of the library. We're actually going to have a lot more input, I think, from the folks that we, that we serve.
Councilmember Savage.
I will just comment on that, because I actually went to one of those focus groups, and it is, it is really a good group of individuals from all over the community representing different things, or just residents that live there and close by. And I think because it's at the library, it was really accessible, and I think that was a really good call. So at least the one I went to, I thought there was a really good diverse group of people. I mean, from, a realtor was there that lived here locally and was, you know, talking about different housing opportunities. Somebody, a lady and her, her daughter were there, and they had benefited from the program. So it was just really, it was just a really good diverse group of people, but...
Is there any kind of evaluation that clients who have received services will fill out an evaluation form about the process or...
Not for our public participation process, but for every agency that we fund, they're required as part of their, their programs and their requirements to actually do outreach and to accept surveys and to do actual surveys of their participants. Absolutely.
Okay.
That's a big part of the process. Okay, so moving forward, actually, what I wanted to comment before moving forward, too, is that this year, what we intend to do also is to move forward, bump the public meeting up four to six weeks, so that it doesn't butt so closely to the public hearing process and then the actual submittal of the plan, to allow for more input.
Yeah. It's a good idea.
To allow for more input from the mayor and council for the selection of activities. And then the public needs community survey, this was a survey taken as part of the consolidated, five-year consolidated planning process. And it's important to note, too, it's a different, completely different priority needs survey from the Tempe Community Council needs assessment that was also conducted. That survey was primarily focused on social service activities and needs and gaps in services. This was a community survey based on categories outlined by HUD, wherein the CDBG funds can be used. So included public facilities, for example, and public works projects. So the survey itself indicating that the public and community services kept out on top, and the city's actually committed its maximum of 15% towards public services each year. So that commitment's in standing, the community facilities and housing falling closely behind those two with respect to the needs. And then lastly, wrapping it up, is just a look back at the last three years of funding, and then this current year of funding. You'll see some similarities in 2012 and 2013, actually, in all four years that you'll see, there's consistency with the program administration and our public service commitment to the maximum of 15% for public service and program administration of 20%. Back in 2012, there was some money funded for the storefront improvement program as seed money for that program. You'll see that, and a little bit set aside for relocation, should that Indian family be displaced during the acquisition that was to move forward. So within those two years that you have up there, you'll see consistently between what I refer to as the discretionary funding, as after we back out the public service and administration, what we've got available to fund, primarily with emergency repairs, split between emergency repairs and acquisition related to affordable housing development for both those years. And then similarly, for 2014, also the money set aside, the discretionary for the emergency repairs at twenty-two percent and nearly twice that for affordable housing acquisition, and then this past or this current fiscal year that we're funding right now, we've increased the commitment to the emergency repairs program, and we had to set aside for the public facilities. In this case, it's the park improvements for Escalante Park. And then the last one, showing just basically the cumulative total for these past three years and current fiscal year, showing that basically the commitment to emergency repairs and affordable housing and the acquisition of affordable housing development, with a slight carve-out for the public facilities just representing this current year. And recently, just taking into consideration where these monies were spent these last three years, large portions, obviously, going towards acquisitions, Denell Plaza, a large commitment to the development of that project. Also, we've got the Don Carlos, which is the eighteen-unit affordable housing development being developed by Habitat for Humanity, which has completed development review process and should be breaking ground shortly in this fall. We have two small parcels, Victory Acres and Don Carlos, which we've purchased lots that will soon be issuing RFPs for single-family new construction development, and the larger project, which is the former Havana Cabana site, which is going to be the new Veterans Project or Valor on Eighth. Additionally, for the home, larger projects have been the gap financing for two or three, actually, large multifamily developments, Meridian Project, the Desert Willow, which have been contracted now, and then also the Valor on Eighth, which is also going to receive some additional home money. Additionally, the funding for home has been said traditionally set aside for the camp program, which is our down payment assistance program, which we fully funded this year, current year. In the previous three years, we've got thirty homeowners. This year, we expect to have another fifteen, just in the one-year cycle. And then the emergency repair program, also fully funded, seventeen for the previous three years. That number should be increased by ten to fifteen this current year, moving forward.
Councilmember Keevey?
So Craig, can you put a human face on this for me? So emergency repairs, seventeen homeowners assisted, how do those people come to you? And how does it, how do they apply? How long does it take for them to get service? Can you just give me the...
Absolutely. Because we're using the federal funds for the program, it's a little harder than it should be sometimes to get through the eligibility process. They can come actually, they actually, what usually they do is come right to our office, either being referred through community information, community information and referral, or through neighbors or any other, our website. And they come in to fill out an application for the program, and then as soon as they can, they meet with our eligibility specialists, and they have to determine their income eligible for the program. Then we need to, we do a site visit to look at the, actually, what the emergency situation is. And then we're required to bid out the project, depending on what the project is, to two or three contractors and work from there.
But if it's an emergency repair, what is it? Is that...
I know, it doesn't happen as quickly as it'd like to in some times, but there's certain steps that we just can't bypass when we're using these funds.
Is that source of funds exhausted each year, the emergency repair fund? Is that a source that is depleted and needs...
Pretty much, yes. It is. It's a very popular program, it's a $10,000 grant, it does not need to be repaid. The program, we primarily assist seniors and those with disabilities in that program.
Councilmember Spire?
Thank you, Mayor Craig. I was going to wait till the end, but Andrew's telling me I should go now. So in terms of the down payment assistance, last time you presented to us, we had a robust discussion, as you may remember, about affordable housing and CDBG funds. And one of the things that came up in that discussion was that there was money left over in the fund, and the reason it was left over wasn't because there wasn't a need, but because there wasn't staffing enough in order to get those funds distributed. Has that issue, in your mind, been corrected? Does it still exist? Where do we stand?
I think that issue's really been corrected. We've been working with staff, and they're working really diligently to make sure that the applications are being processed as they come through the door. So as for the down payment assistance right now, we're taking applications, but we are really processing them as they come in, so...
So Mayor, last time we heard from Craig, you mentioned that there was sort of like a waiting list, or a bunch of applications that were unprocessed. So I guess at this point, anyone who has applied and is eligible, we have dispersed funds for, is that a true statement?
For the down payment assistance program? The way the process works is they come in and apply for the assistance, as soon as they're deemed eligible and qualified for a loan, they're issued what we call a reservation letter, which is basically our approval that they've got ninety days to go locate a property. So at any one time, we can have twelve to fifteen folks with their letter saying the city's going to back them up, so they're out looking essentially.
There's no more backlog?
No.
No.
Okay, and so is the fund depleted down to, I assume...
It will be, by the time you go through this year's...
It'll be zero.
By next March, right, or CIP, it'll be zero.
It'll be zero. Yeah.
Okay, because it wasn't the case from last year to this year because of the...
No, that money goes through at $30,000, and with fifteen this year, that's about $450,000, and that's two years' funding right there.
Councilmember Keevey?
So what about repairs that are under $10,000? Is that a different sort of category? What if you need...
Oh, no, it's just a maximum, up to $10,000. It's a maximum.
So, but seventeen homeowners assisted repairs, that's over three years' time?
Previous three years.
So how many, how many people applied, how many people got assistance with that?
I could give you that answer, but I don't have it off the top of my head. We report it each year as part of our annual report to HUD, so it's easy to get.
Yeah, it'd be good to know, like, how many, what's the unmet need out there? Because I'm sure there is an unmet need, and if so, we might need to look at adjusting that or finding other funds. Okay, thank you.
And with that, I think we were just opening it up for discussion and mayor and council direction with respect to moving forward with funding priorities for next fiscal year.
Councilmember Granville?
So, and this is an area where I'm going to wade a little bit into waters I don't know that well, so if I'm saying something incorrectly, just correct me, and I won't take offense to it. One of the things that we'd heard with the Havana Cabana site, and this, again, is as it was told us, not as, you know, the definitive truth is, but is that, you know, in council, in executive session, when we're acquiring property, we don't want to, you know, tip off everywhere we're buying property, because the property goes up in value and it becomes absurd. So we'll have a discussion in executive session about, well, we should use CDBG money for this fund, for this location, and we'll do this, you know, quickly, and we'll try and get what we can, which makes sense, except that then means that once we've acquired that property, we can only use that property for CDGB-eligible things. In this case, it worked out great. It was veterans housing on Eighth Street, which all the surrounding neighbors seemed to be okay with. But by doing that in executive session, we've essentially circumvented any public process of what that parcel might be used for. Is there, and maybe, I don't even expect an answer today, but maybe just if you can come back with us with some options, of a way to include the surrounding community in that discussion before we have that or when we have that executive session, so that they can have the ability to say, look, you know, we like this kind of project, but not this kind of project, or this kind of thing. And frankly, I don't have a lot of sympathy for the not-in-my-backyard people, but I do have a lot of sympathy for people that would say, I'm comfortable with this kind of housing type, but not necessarily who lives there, but the type, whether it's multifamily or single-family or whatever. And so that we're not committing funds and committing a type of project and committing everything without doing what we would normally do, which is talk to all the neighbors first. That make sense, Mr. Woods, or no?
It makes sense, I'm just concerned about it. Not from the standpoint of actually getting more community input, I think that's actually something we should always do with projects. And I know in the last few years, we've actually done things that have expanded that in terms of doubling the notification radius and having more public meetings.
But none of that applies to CDBG money?
I know, but I think my only concern just comes down to, you know, some of the executive session commentary, and how do we actually do that without sort of disclosing some of the conversation when it comes to land acquisition? Because I do believe some of those things are very touchy, so that's my concern.
I completely agree. So, and I don't know if this is the solution, but let me give you an example of what a solution might be, is that we have a policy that when we're doing land acquisition, instead of doing a notification saying, hey, we're buying land, hope you raise the prices of that land as much as you can, that we have a policy where we go to just the Neighborhood and Homeowners Association presidents, have them sign a non-disclosure agreement, and bring in just those two or three people, and say, here's what we're thinking about doing. We'd love to do like what we normally do, but we can't because we're acquiring land, and there's a whole bunch of issues with that. But at the very least, we could bring in a few people that have been elected by that group to be representative of their will, and say, look, we want to talk to you about something, but you have to sign this piece of paper first. Maybe that's a horrible example, but something, well, no, I mean, I don't know what the answer is, but we're doing, but it's, we go through all this effort, and I think rightly so, to expand our area that we're talking to people, except in this one thing, CDBG money, where we talk to nobody. And so...
Well, I don't think we don't talk to anybody, because right here, we have a public participation process, where we have focus group meetings of our concerns, our needs, and our priorities, and on the priority needs in the community survey that we have. And listening to it, that's the community survey that we have for the public, that we engage our residents in and stakeholders in. And then that's based on the information that our staff provides us, and if there's an opportunity that comes up, we're looking at some of our needs, and it clearly states public community services, community facilities, and housing. So this is where some of that stuff comes into play.
But you understand that land could be acquired right next to your house?
I understand.
To do a specific thing right next to your house, and then you would only have one potential use.
But we also have public hearing processes when we, you know, we do have that, and there is opportunities to have that through DRC, through our two hearing process at the council, at the council level, when we do move forward. So it is that, if there is opposition to something like that, which is why we have this participation with the public, I think that's a good opportunity to do it. And we also, I don't think anybody would be opposed to having public meetings once we look at moving forward with something of that nature. I think that's what we would embrace, actually.
With that being said, I mean, our 2040 plan is laying out what those areas are and what the potential of those areas could be. I mean, so it's not an unknown what those areas are, but as the mayor says, they're still in that process, and there's still that process with the council on if this is still a good use or a good design for that, for that area, even if it is that CBG money.
But you understand that if it's CDGB money, it can only be used for CDBG things. And there are neighbors who might say, I don't want it.
But they may not want it, and we have the public meeting here at the dais, and people may oppose to having this there. And I think if, and for example, with the veteran housing on Eighth Street, if there was enough people opposed to it, do you think we wouldn't move forward with it?
I'm not sure we'd have had a choice. We'd have had to pay back that money.
True, but as a matter of fact, in that specific case about Valor on Eighth, one of the reasons why there was so little opposition was because the developer themselves, who I think learned something from the previous Gracie's Village issue, actually went out to the condo development directly east and said, hey, this is something that we actually want to do. And by the time it actually came back to us, they had actually secured the neighborhood support.
If you guys are telling, if you guys are telling Craig, don't come back with an option, then tell him that. I think we should have an option.
No, but to my point, I don't have a problem, you know, with, to, I'm not actually disagreeing with you. To your point, I mean, if there is some way that staff can actually do that, and we can still make sure that we can maintain the confidentiality of the process, if we are sharing it with a couple of neighborhood or HOA presidents, I don't have any discomfort with that. I just want to make sure that it's something we can do where nothing gets out, that's all. That's my only concern, but I have no problem involving more residents in the process, because I think that makes the process stronger. I agree.
And we agree.
We don't know what it is, but you take it down.
The agreement is to come back with some sort of something that might allow us to get feedback. Well, no, to come, to come back, I think... The agreement is to come back with something that includes people before we commit CDBG monies to land acquisition.
Okay, so before we get to the point of actually having to refund the money, if there's a difference, you want to have an engagement process prior to the commitment of the dollars, before we commit dollars to, CDBG dollars to the project. As long as that's everybody, what you wanted to hear is how we might approach that creatively.
And there may be no answer. I understand that's the case, that may be the case, too.
So is it, is it safe to say that every, whatever, I mean, and there's probably not that many of Tempe parcels, but every Tempe parcel pretty much should have a meeting to say, this one day could be this, but we don't know what it is? Is that what we're saying?
I mean, isn't that part of the general planning process?
You have the general plan process, you have the notice we do for whenever there's a rezoning. I think that's sort of what Vice Mayor Woods was talking about and the mayor, which is, there are things that we do to notify the public when there's a land use change, or when there's some, you know, development that comes in to inform the public. What I think Councilmember Granville's talking about is, in our end, as we make the decision to either spend or not spend CDBG dollars on certain types of development that's low to moderate income housing, although maybe it's expanded to more than that, use the Valor on Eighth, which is why I use that as the example, if that's the specific example of low to moderate income housing support, where we commit CDBG dollars to it, how do we get more public input earlier in the process before we actually have to commit the monies to acquire the properties?
Well, how do we...
In a manner which does not affect our ability to negotiate in this space with the private market.
Right, I don't disagree with that, I just, I just kind of am curious how that works, because sometimes when we purchase it, we're not really exactly sure what it's going to be. You guys referenced, you know, Valor on Eighth, and we didn't know that. When we purchased the property, that was not what we...
The specificity of what type of project you don't know. But you know that, I think, the point being that the parameters is, there has to be an eligibility to use these dollars, which is restricted based upon income of those who would live there.
Councilman Navarro, then Vice Mayor Woods.
And just to that point, but who do you, in that case, who would you notify? Because apartments are all around that, there's no housing. It's, you know, no property owners but up next to that. So how, does that qualify?
The council wants us to look into this, I think those are the sorts of questions we would ask ourselves as staff and bring back what we think we could do, I think.
That's fine.
We could do that.
Yes.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Woods?
One of the issues I'll just raise, too, is that I know pretty much all of us on council have been big advocates for talking about more affordable housing in the community. And one of my concerns with that, too, is just maybe some potential negative impact we have to clearly account for, is if you go to someone and say, hey, we're going to use CDBG funding to purchase this, which means fifty-one percent of the proposed development would then have to be, you know, probably low income of some sort, I'm concerned that we're going to get potentially a lot less affordable housing, because people sometimes hear affordable housing and begin to get very concerned. And a lot of times, what people hear about affordable housing are stereotypes, which frankly, don't have any real basis in fact. So I also want to make sure that we're not creating something where all of a sudden we don't see any more affordable housing, because people get very frightened from the beginning, as opposed to letting the process truly play out, and we can see the quality of the actual development.
That's a concern, that's a valid concern.
Okay, I think you heard those concerns.
Yep.
Any other comments or discussions for Naomi and Craig?
Just, I think moving forward, I know I like to see, I'm a metrics person, and just see, you know, who applied for services, who didn't get them, what the length of time was, and just sort of have a self-assessment and evaluation of how we proceed, because I think that would, that would help identify unmet need in the community, because these funds are, are funds really for the poorest of the poor, our most vulnerable citizens. And if there's unmet need, we need to have a way to quantify it and move forward with the plan to solve it.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is feature agenda items. Seeing none, at this time, I'm going to ask if we take a break, please, and then we can come back and finish our committee of the whole. We are June. Okay, we're going to go ahead and convene our committee of the whole items. Next item on our agenda is item 3A1, which is Arizona Department of Transportation Park Feasibility Study. We have Bonnie and Don Bessler.
Mayor Mitchell, Don Bessler, Director of Public Works. I'm joined tonight by Bonnie, and Bonnie is the principal planner for our Greenscapes and Transportation Group, Bonnie Richardson. And she is actually, if you recall, the last time we talked about this was in February, and Eric Iverson was handling the project at that time, but with some of Eric's other commitments and Bonnie's great background in landscape architecture and greenscape, we've asked her to step in, and she's done a great job of that. She's going to walk you through the presentation. It's a pretty detailed presentation, it's based on a very, very detailed report that was prepared for us by J2. They did an incredible site analysis. I do, I want to acknowledge that the last time we talked about this with you, there was a real message from the council to be sure not to elevate the conversation in a way that would detract from all of the really good work the council has directed on renovating our neighborhood parks, so to make sure that we're clear about that, and to ensure that we look at a range of options, from low, low-impact options to something more robust, so that we had that range. And I almost said low cost, and what you're going to find out, and one of the big takeaways from this presentation is, because of the configuration of this site, it's a forty-two-acre regional detention site, in order to open it up for public access, there is really no low-cost solution. You have to account for accessibility, you have to count for security, you have to count You have to account for accessibility. You have to count for security. You have to count for safety. And acknowledge the primary purpose as a regional detention facility. So Bonnie's going to walk you through that. And at the end of this, one of the big questions that we have from a policy standpoint is simply this, that this property is under city control currently as part of a 25-year lease that the city signed with ADOT almost 25 years ago. This fall, the city will have to need to make a decision whether or not to renew that lease. We are one of the primary stakeholders as it relates to putting storm waters in that. ADOT has indicated to us that whether or not we make that October deadline specifically, they're certainly more than willing to work with us on that. They understand its importance to both Tempe and South Phoenix as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bonnie to walk you through the presentation.
Right. Thank you very much. This is a pretty big scope in terms of evaluating what might happen on this site in the future. And I guess I'd preface my remarks with saying J2 and our staff took the long view with this. We recognize that in Tempe because we're landlocked, there are not very many open spaces left. So if we're really looking 20, 30, 40 years ahead at where we might have open space, this would be one of those places. Oh, where are we?
That's not good.
Not, not clicking. Do you like that? We're done.
And we got the funding already taken care of, so it's good. Just say yeah.
There we go.
Hey, we're back.
I'm my assistant now to run this for me. So we looked at site considerations and after the last meeting with you, we were asked to look at both existing and missing amenities that are in our existing parks. And like Don said, this is in no way meant to take precedence over any park that we have today. It's meant to just give you a future look at what might happen at this site. Looking at open space as well as recreation, you asked us to look at passive as well as active parks and alternatives for outdoor activities. So I wanted to set the stage here. The green area is where this is located, this basin along the freeway there. And it really has some sense of regionality. We take in water from South Phoenix, Awatuki, and the mountains there, as well as from Tempe and Chandler. If you go to the next site, we have, you can see here, the yellow arrow shows a connection to a Phoenix park. And, and actually, they have some ball fields, some other amenities typical with our parks. As you can see, a water play area. And we're connected under the freeway through a tunnel structure. So there is an opportunity if something does develop, we might be able to work regionally or with other city partners to be able to do something here. One of the active types of activities in parks might be little league fields. We looked at both things that are popular in our city that we want to expand or we always could use more of, as well as activities we don't currently have. You will see on all of these slides, to the right, there's the diagram, and it shows you where we would fill to get to a certain level above most rainfall. And at the very bottom is a cost opinion. Again, these are very, very rough cost estimates because we haven't gone into the detail you would need to do to come up with real close costs. Also, all of these offer a lot of choices. So we've thrown a lot in each of these plans. We could phase any one of them at the time you decide to do anything or eliminate certain things. This one deals with multi-use fields. Again, we'd have some infill. Challenges to this site for any kind of operation include access, automobile access, parking. We are not adjacent to a street. So we either need to have some kind of easement agreement with the parking to the north of us where there's a business park. We right now use their access to get to the site. Or there is access along the canal from the north. So those are costs that are substantial. If you look at activities that require less parking, your costs go down. This is an adventure park, looking at the BMX and the skate park and all those kinds of things that would fit nicely in this type of terrain. Okay, next. Fitness park. Here you have passive again, where you can go out and do the trails. You can do your exercise. We could have programmed activities, but it could also be more of a passive nature. The Riparian Nature Trail. You'll see this has some interesting landforms in this section. It's designed, those colored layers actually show that you could use some trails when it's flooded and others when it's dry. It's, it's more of a nature relationship and letting people understand the desert environment when we do get water. This looked at the Great Lawn, where we could bring people to this area for some type of a larger event. This parks 300 cars on the site. Again, it requires more control, access, and probably outside vendors. And then this is an expanded version of some of our neighborhood parks. The dog parks, of course, are always popular, so we looked at that as well. I will mention that up next to the canal, which has been improved recently, we have an area there, a triangle, that the city owns. And that makes a great segue to allow us to bring people in from the canal down to this area, if we like. We can develop that as more neighborhood friendly with a basketball court or some restrooms and a children's play area. So the hybrid criteria, passive and active, was an interesting way to approach this. If it's particularly passive for most of the time, but you could use vendor activities for the active, you could draw different types of uses. We have to retain the drainage. We handled at least better, greater than 100-year flood last year in last September. So we know it can handle that and there's 30 feet of capacity above that level. So we've worked with the Maricopa Flood District to evaluate the capacities. We'd use low-water trees, natural grasses, not water, anything anymore than we absolutely had to, low operations and maintenance costs, and could accommodate fee-based events and activities. So then we took what we learned from doing those studies and we tried to do a little bit more refined development of two concepts. The Aviator Park is the first. And we did that because it's a very popular use now and it's growing with both drones and airplanes that are being flown a lot now for the various hobby-type airplanes. And what we're finding is that there are a lot of pilots and adults primarily who are interested in this type of activity. And they do have organized competitions and for-fee events. So it would be of interest regionally, for sure. We tried to take, we've got some beams, concrete beams, that were left over from the freeway construction. Rather than have to do anything with those, we tried to use them to construct some of the amenities. So it could create a stage-like setting and we could do quite a few interesting things. When not used as a competition area for drones, it could also be a passive trail area, running area, yoga, all sorts of different other fitness opportunities there. And again, you can see that small park up at the top by the canal there. Okay? And then the adventure parks. So we took this one a little further as well in working out how you would get in. Again, that's got an awful lot of the trails, but we still are bringing in auto traffic and parking within the site. What we did with these last two is we went through and did cost by phase. So what we found, and this is the challenge for any of these deep basins, is the initial cost is rather high. Primarily, you've got 42 and a half acres that you have to fence and manage access to and make that safe access and accessible. So that ended up raising costs as well as some of the initial earthwork and whether or not you needed parking. Do you want to talk to, these are some of the regional parks. And when J2 actually did their initial survey and feasibility, they looked at a number of parks in Chandler, Scottsdale, Phoenix, and Tempe to evaluate what services were available and what else existed. And there are quite a few basins that have been turned into really nice and quite popular parks in the area. So there is precedent for doing this type of work.
So again, just to make sure that it's really clear about how does this park, if at all, fit into the city's CIP, I want to just remind the viewing audience that the council has adopted very robust directions for how we prepare our CIP, whether it's for streets, whether it's for our facilities or our parks. And that is that we, one, we consider level one is we address all things that are public health and safety. So make sure that the property that we own is safe, accessible, and people will not get hurt on it. Secondly, preserve the assets that we currently have. So for the last five years, we've really, outside some separate funding source, which has been mostly transportation-related projects, not exclusively, but mostly, we have worked only on level one and two priorities. We just haven't, we do not have the capacity in our CIP to begin doing level three and four projects, which are essentially system expansion, so adding more to the system. And so adding a new park would be adding more to the system. Or level three would be customer enhancements. So taking what we have and going beyond just replacing it and making sure that it's, you know, usable, safe, and accessible. But something beyond that. And we just haven't had the ability to do that. The council, again, the purpose of this slide is to remind the viewing audience that that's not been the direction from council, nor has it, nor is it. We know from the study that J2 did and the engineering analysis that the startup cost for investment in order to, again, to secure public access, to make sure that you are not creating a situation where some can enjoy it, but people just can't get into the site unless they're able to hike into it or something. You're looking at about $3 to $4 million. So that's, that's not a modest commitment. That money does not exist in the CIP under our current priority system. All of the concepts, as Bonnie talked about, can be phased over some long amount of time. And certainly that's something that the council may want to preserve that opportunity. I think it's important, and what the fourth bullet's intended to say is that while a $3 to $4 million minimal or startup investment is not minimal, if you were to go out and try to acquire 42 acres, you'd be looking at probably four times that just for the acquisition of the land. So again, deferring and avoiding land costs, rather, avoiding land costs is something that plays into how the council may want to choose in the future to approach expanding the park system. On that order, there's another site that's similar, but not exactly the same, that actually is in Tempe. It's just south of the 60. It's near Hardy. It's an old ADOT site. It was used for storm detention. It's not nearly as deep and doesn't have near the capacity issues. Similarly, it doesn't have easy access. It has a range of constrictions, just like this site would have. But it allows the council to be thinking generationally about other opportunities that might be out there for you. This isn't one of these situations where we're inferring that you just take one set of work and paste it down on the other one and you're good to go. Regardless of whether or not the council decides in the future to move forward with a park here, it, its use as a regional detention facility is, is pretty much permanent. It's something that needs to happen for both Tempe and Phoenix, and a little bit from Chandler. Next steps are for us to just take your lead and find out how you want to move forward with this. You don't have to decide tonight, but soon we're going to want to know if you want to recommit to that lease agreement with ADOT. So I guess I'll just close with that.
Yep. Any comments from council? Councilmember Cubey.
Well, I know from some work that's been done at ASU, a scientist whose name escapes me, there's a high correlation between proximity to a highway and asthma in children. And so I worry about, it was one of the, some of the options there were playing fields. I really worry about that. I mean, there's also options with adult, adult facilities. But for kids who are much more vulnerable, I really worry about playing fields right smack on the highway. That's not even, you know, right on the highway is like a guaranteed increase in asthma-related incidences. When I saw that, I kind of gasped.
And this was really just to look at traditional as well as, as alternatives? Just so you'd have something to measure it against? But you're right.
But at what point are we looking at this or deciding? Because I mean, obviously, we want to get our present parks up to snuff before we even look at expansion. So what timeframe are we looking at for this possible?
We do not have a timeframe at all. We were just asked to look at it so that you could make a decision about how you would respond to the lease and if you wanted to.
There is a timeframe, actually, because of the lease.
Well, the lease, yeah, your action on the lease. So that's how we were preparing this. But we didn't really have a timeframe on developing anything on that property. And that would be up to council direction.
Councilmember Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I mean, I thought it was really kind of enlightening. It was really interesting information, so I really do appreciate that. And I think just to kind of take an inventory of what's around there and what would work based on a possible need. I like that. I thought that was a really great approach. And I know this is going to come down to whether we want to renew that lease and what that means to us. But part of me says is, if we desire to expand someday down the road, whatever that may be, I think I would want to know that this would be our best option and the best place. I don't know, I mean, you mentioned it. I know, Bonnie, that there's not a lot of other opportunities within the city, but I would like to know what they are, where they are, before I, I said, yeah, let's hang on to that lease because I think someday down the road, maybe it's 15 years, that we want to be able to develop that. But I, it's hard for me to say that would definitely be my top priority with not knowing what other options would be out there, if any. And there may not be any. So, I mean, I don't know what the, the pros and the cons are to keeping that lease. It doesn't seem like it's really been a problem, but.
The cost is money.
Yeah, what is that?
We have some, we have to maintain it. So right now, that is a graffiti challenge. Everything that's out there is graffitied and ongoing. I mean, if we were actually doing something out there, it'd probably be best to have a graffiti artist do something and then they wouldn't keep.
Actually, it is pretty.
Wouldn't keep destroying other, other items. And it would be appropriate graffiti, I guess you'd say.
Councilmember Granville?
Yeah. I think I, I agree with some of the things that, that Councilmember Cubey and Arredondo Savage said in that I, it would be impossible for me to say yes to a dollar amount or to a project until, and I think this is what I've heard from everyone else, well, probably from everyone, until we've got our existing parks up to snuff. And I think it's not unrealistic to say that's a 10 or 15-year timeframe, maybe. Maybe faster, maybe longer. I mean, it depends on a lot of factors. The thing that, that I would like to see is, I would like to, I mean, sometimes I think, I feel like good and better gets in the way of best, or best gets in the way of better, or whatever, whatever that saying is. Fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on the guy who shamed me. Whatever that quote was.
You can't be fooled again.
Can't fool me again, right? A point, what I'm trying to get is, I would like us to see about, in the interim, until one of these, and I really don't have a dog in which fight that ends up being, in the interim, we just put something out to the public and say, look, if the city contributes a donut hole, would you want to do something here? I bet we would find the answer is yes. I bet there are a couple of groups that would say, even, whether it's an aviation group, whether it's an Archer group, whether it's a BMX dirt bike group, where they'd say, look, we don't need your money. We just need a place that we're not going to get run off. And if you just, we'll sign whatever waiver you want. We'll sign whatever paperwork you want. Just let us bring out a couple of trucks of dirt. Or whatever the case may be, or our drones, or our model airplanes. I bet you'd get people that would say yes. And that would at least give us the next 10 to 15 years. And they understand when they sign this agreement that someday they're going to get run off. But at the speed the cities move, it could be a while before they get run off.
Vice Mayor Woods? Thank you, Mayor. One of, just to kind of follow up on Councilmember Granville's comments, one of my concerns, though, about that, there are a couple of things. And it's a comment that you made a while back, and I totally agree with you. When we talk to residents, basically their perspective is either we have money or we don't. We like to on council, because, you know, the way things work when you get more intricately involved in these things is primary property tax versus secondary property tax versus bed tax versus sales tax. And really, when we talk to people, their attitude is, you either have money or you don't. And so I agree with the notion of, we probably can't develop this park for, for some time. The issue I have, even if someone though, I have the same concern, frankly, as Councilmember Cubey when it comes to asthma. Some of my previous work was with the American Lung Association, and there were a lot of studies on that about schools and parks that were, you know, directly adjacent to freeways and heavily traveled roads in the instances of asthma and other kinds of respiratory illnesses. So I would have that same concern. The concern I have, though, about even the waiver, even though, even if someone decides they want to do some kind of a waiver on the property saying, I know if I play out here, if I do something, launch drones, or have a picnic or whatever, if something actually happens on that land, even if we're not technically liable, we're going to be viewed as liable. I know the way the stories, you know, look. At the end of the day, it becomes if a kid runs out into the street, or something happens, or the land is toxic, or whatever, you know, calamity I could possibly think of, I can't see us holding up a waiver and saying, yeah, these folks signed a waiver that said, we're, the city is not responsible for what happens. In the court of public opinion, I think we are still going to get blamed for that. So that really is my biggest concern. The other thing I was going to ask is, you know, given the, the agreement running out, isn't there some possibility of us just simply giving the land back?
Councilmember Woods, you know, that's a really good question. What happens if the city just sits on our hands and says, I don't know if we want to sign this lease or not? And I have a very squishy answer for you.
Uh-oh.
That is that, you know, it's got a lot of historical use as a regional flood control facility and storm water receiving site. So probably good lawyers would have to spend a little bit of time about talking about that and what that all means. It's clearly something that would be problematic for anybody to really do something with it. And we think, based on what ADOT's told us, that they would continue to work with the city and Phoenix and Chandler to some minor amount. and Chandler to some minor amount, if we needed to, to preserve its use as it is today. But the city may not want to be in the A position, which we are now. The A position is, we control it through a lease, and we can decide what that, what we want to do with that. So that's another decision that the council might want to make. And I, I'm not prepared tonight to give you anything strong about, you know, what legally could happen, but it's something we can certainly continue to explore.
Councilmember Navarro?
No, I appreciate the comments. I, you know, obviously, this is something I've been, you know, interested in and willing to explore and wanting to bring to the council to at least hear it out. And I think that, you know, the biggest thing is, do we continue with this lease or not? Put aside everything else, do we just continue on the road we are, say, tell ADOT, hey, we want to know 25 years, because we just don't know what we would do with this, but at least have that position to say, we don't know, but someday we might, within 15 years, to have something to do with that. I think it's smart. You know, I can understand with the asthma and everything like that, but we also live in a large city, and I don't know how you get around that anyways. I mean, close proximity to a freeway, but then you're in a ditch, does that, whether the, whether the effects of, you know, the dust going down as opposed to going up? I don't know. Do you know? That's, those are the things I don't know. But, but, you know, with, with that said, it's like we have valley fever. We have a whole bunch of air problems over here. You know, I, I just can't say we're not doing it because if someone's going to have asthma. I have asthma, too. I agree. I understand that. So it's, it's something that everyone deals with. But there's a variety of parks, you know, like Discovery Park, beautiful park, well-attended, right next to a freeway. And, yeah, I have that, too. Well-attended and next to a freeway. But the thing is, they add value to the region. They add value to what they do as a play. The opportunity here, and I think Colby, you know, said it, is there somebody out there that would want to invest in this area? Is there a possibility that someone would want to invest in a section of it? Is there a possibility that we can work with SRP to have access to that park to minimize the cost? You know, we don't know until we at least say, yeah, we, we have the opportunity. But we don't have the opportunity, then, then there goes that opportunity. We have housing development that's going on just right to the back of it, only on, on the Tempe side and on the Chandler side. You have tons of families right there. We have impact fees that actually could help with, you know, some of the infrastructure in this area. You also have two council members that I've talked to in Phoenix and in Chandler, that both would be very supportive of this park, because they see the regional value in it. Regional value is this. You have Pecos Park, yeah, you have Pecos Park, you have the park right across the freeway, and you have a Tempe Sports Complex. And regionally, that can host a variety of different events. And that's economic opportunity that we could have in this area. Chandler benefits from it, Phoenix benefits from it, and we do, too. And those are the possibilities of what we could have. But to say, you know what, let's just let it go, and let's just ride, and maybe someone else pick it up. I don't know what we'll do with it. Why not just say, at least, at least, the minimum, let's continue, let's go on with an agreement, to at least have it for something that, down the road? Because I would love to entertain, because I know South Tempe, and especially with the Little League, but not only with just Little League, other, other sports around that area, we don't have enough ball fields. We just don't. Plain and simple, we don't. Especially for tournament play, we don't. Plain and simple. And I bet you, and it's always on the radar, hey, is that ADOT pick going to be doing, doing something? Well, let's give them an opportunity to discover some options that could help that park become viable.
As Robin put out, is that the best location to have ball fields? I agree, we're, we're short on ball fields.
But we don't have any of the best locations. We're, I mean, no, 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 no. In terms of, you want to wipe down a neighborhood, and that's, that's the best location.
We have open spaces.
Yeah, we don't have open spaces that are there to buy. This is, this is not to buy. This is just to develop. We would have to buy property costing four times the amount of, for that 42 acres. I mean, I'm all willing, if we could, you know, find some area, hey, let's find that.
You can check the general, the general plan 2040, and we do account for open space available, and it's diminishing not getting bigger. And so we have Rio Salado, of course, any golf courses, a portion of Papago that's in our city limits. But having any large parcels like these, it's probably just these two. And again, both by roadways, but then, some of the others that are developed also are, are adjacent to.
Vice Mayor Woods, then Councilmember Cubey?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, thinking about what Councilmember Navarro was saying, I mean, one potentially good option from my standpoint might be, kind of like what we did with the Rio Salado golf course, you know, we could potentially work to sort of sign a long-term lease with ADOT, and then put out an RFP and work with some kind of a private developer or contractor to see if there's something that they could come up with creatively on the site. But currently, that's the only thing I can really think of, you know, in terms of, you know.
That's three of us. I mean, I'm not saying it has to be a BMX or an archery. It could be composting. It could be, but something at zero cost to the city that makes their land productive.
Right. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm just, I'm just more concerned, and I think I'm just sort of, you know, piggyback off of Councilmember Cubey's comments, I'm more concerned about the park uses from the standpoint of children being out there. Respect, that really kind of concerns me. But if there's something else that we could do in terms of maybe someone having another creative option, I could potentially look into that, so.
Councilmember Cubey?
About a water park for dogs.
Oh, hey.
Yeah, I just, I, I'm a little concerned about just an investment of city monies in buying the land. I agree with you, Colby. I think we should look at a productive use for it, but not necessarily investing city dollars in it.
What, what if we propose this? I think there's, is there consensus to even look at a lease? Is that already in our budget?
Yeah, I think it's a $1 a year deal or something.
So if there's an opportunity
I don't want to spend
I said not a dollar.
You're out.
I'll go $1 a year.
If there's, if there's an opportunity for a lease, I mean, and then we can have this discussion, but I think, I think you've heard loud and clear from the majority, unless you guys tell me differently, that our first priority are existing parks. And when it comes to funding for our parks, that's our first priority. Anything above and beyond, or if we do a particular, if we did an RFP and someone, a private entity came in along and said, hey, there's an opportunity to do something in this pit, I think, I think we would entertain that, if that's not something we would entertain. Councilmember Granville?
All right. First off, I appreciate you bringing a little bit of clarity to our discussion. It sounds like, I think you're right. I think there's a general agreement that will at least, you know, continue the lease, because there's not much, you know, there's no harm in it. But, I mean, the thing I would like to have us see if we've got a consensus on, is rather than being reactive, saying somebody comes to us and says, I want to do this, what do you think? Which is what we got, we get once in a while. I'd rather be proactive and say, give us everything at once, so we're not weighing the pros and cons of one proposal, but we're comparing multiple proposals.
Could issue an RFP. I don't think nothing would prohibit us.
As just a $0, what do you want to do with it if we're willing to, you know?
Tom?
Mayor, I think, you know, based on the conversation, one thing that might be helpful for the council, and what we're hearing is, let's go ahead and move towards renewing the lease, which will be an action from council. In the meantime, what we can do, I think Bonnie brought up a really good point, which is, all of this needs to be grounded back to the general plan. Talk a little bit about it from the general plan perspective, so that we could develop a list of criteria of things that you might want to consider on that site, and things you just would never want to consider on that site, even if somebody came to you with a proposal. And talk about what that is, and that that could be the foundation for some sort of an RFP or a transitional use of the site. Would that make sense?
Yes. Councilmember Cubey?
I want to say, there's a lot of really great ideas in here, like 21st century park ideas that could be repurposed for a lot of other places, too, should we not go down the path of designing it as a city, the entire site. There's just a lot of, I like this idea moving towards 21st century and different concepts for parks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is that enough direction?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We were just talking. Didn't cost anything.
Clean up.
We're just going to be out there with
I'm going to be out there with a bow and arrow in a couple of weekends, and wait to see if anyone runs me off.
Just set up a pickleball court.
Would be awesome. Dirt pickleball court.
All right.
She loves the pickleball.
Next item on agenda is the opt-in publicly financed campaign system.
You got a hike, yes.
Piper, come on down.
That's steep.
Mayor, while they're walking down, if I might, I just want to start off by saying, these two, and Kristen Gwynn have done an immense amount of work since a month ago, when we met on this. And this, as you've all seen, the 21-page ordinance and the resolution and the overview that Kristen put together, not just, not just those three, but their teams as well. I mean, Judy's team, Tim and Brigida's office just put a lot of work in. And I just wanted to start off by thanking them, as well as Ken Jones and Elizabeth and other staff who've, who've contributed.
Okay. Ms. Piper, or how are we going to kick this off?
I can take it, if you want.
Okay.
So the first thing I want to do is just clear up a confusion from earlier. So the document that Marianne was referencing, I looked back at the, at the old memo, which was sort of, as I mentioned to Robin earlier, was sort of a plain language version of what we intended to later put in the ordinance. The feedback the work group got from council when we met last month, was that you all wanted to actually see the ordinance before we moved forward in the process. And so what Judy and her team, along with our work group, have been, you know, really plugging away on for most of that time, is getting the actual ordinance done alongside an overview that Kristen put together, which is sort of a plain language, I think, four-page summary, as well as the, as well as a, an amended resolution. So since that time, like I said, we put the relevant language in the ordinance. The revenue sources reflected on this document are in the ordinance, as are the responsibilities of the clerk. And so we had this discussion earlier about what's actually in the ordinance. So the revenue sources are in there, and then the things that the clerk's office is tasked with doing are in there. But I, I think, I don't think that you want to put in permanent city code, a budget of, that looks like this. Like, this is, this is the exact amount that they're going to be spending. And so I think, and I hear Corey agreeing, I don't know if Colby agrees, I think the work group, I don't think would have wanted to go that direction in terms of being that explicit. Now, I can't explain the discrepancy in terms of the number that Marianne referenced. So just to make sure we're on the same page, the $70,000 estimate that Marianne cited is no longer the case per the ordinance, because there was one change, one major change, from this document to the ordinance. And that was, in this draft, which I had a chance to review, I haven't looked at it in a month, but in this draft, Brigida had slotted in $40,000 for a candidate pamphlet, which the work group, when we got together, we thought that that wasn't necessary. And so it's just, that was something that the state clean election system did, but it's something that they, you know, they, they send out, you know, those big, thick pamphlets that have all the candidate statements and stuff in that. We didn't, we didn't think it was, you know, that we needed to spend $40,000 out of the fund to do that. So that took the, the fund down substantially. The remaining budget, if you look at that, this sheet from a month ago, is $29,600.
Thank you for saying that. How come that wasn't in our packet, though?
It doesn't need to be, because it's now in the ordinance. So we now actually have a real ordinance to look at.
Budget's not in the ordinance.
Right. Well, but this is what I'm saying. The revenue, so this, this document here at the bottom talks about revenue. All of that is in the ordinance. And then at the top, you see the responsibilities, I mean, the types of things that she's going to need to be doing. The responsibilities of the clerk's office are outlined in the ordinance, in terms of having to check the five-dollar contributions, being the filing entity for participating candidates to opt in, as well as, you know, when they submit all of their reports, et cetera. And so, the only thing that's not in the ordinance is the dollar amounts that were posted here in the form from a month ago. And these were just estimates. You don't want to, I don't think you want to put estimates of what we think they're going to spend, when we don't even know how many candidates there are going to be. I don't think you want to put that in the city code. So just, just to, just to go back just a second, so $29,600 was her estimate, taking out the pamphlet. The clerk, in the first year, based on the estimates we have, the clerk in the first year will get 20, about $20,000, probably a little bit more than $20,000, because we did say 20% in the first year. Then, as candidates opt in to participate, as they, actually, as they turn in their qualifying contributions, the clerk's office would keep those qualifying contributions, and then also get a two-to-one match out of the fund. So it ends up being, for council candidates, it ends up being like $3,500, $4,000 that she would get per candidate, that allows her basically to administer that one candidate for that election cycle. And so, the amount of funding that the clerk's office would get would be proportionate to the number of candidates who participate, which is really a recommendation that I heard from the Clean Elections Commission, that they, that they would like to be able to tweak their formula to be something like that. And then also, there was a provision in this original document, which is still unchanged, which says, if the, if the fund in the clerk's office were to ever fall below $15,000, then she would get 5% out of the fund. So here's the thing. If the qualifying contributions and the two-to-one match, if those alone pay for it, and that's all she needs, no percentage would ever come out of the fund, other than the two-to-one match. Only if she fell below the $15,000 threshold, would then she start getting 5% until she got back above the $15,000 threshold. Okay, so I just wanted to clear that up. Are there any questions on that before I move on? Okay.
Well, so if you have one candidate or seven candidates?
It's a different amount. It'd be seven times the amount of money.
But one candidate would not be beneficial to the, I mean, it'd be, is there more of a cost for one versus?
I think that's a Brigida question, but.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that we, we really don't know is how many candidates will you, will use the system. We've gone back and looked at the past three election cycles and have a pretty good estimate, but we really don't know. This is a new program, so, I mean, it is a learning curve for our office, and it's a new staff member. I would imagine the first year would take a little bit more effort than, you know, once we have a year under our belt.
But I think that, I mean, to Joel's point, the more candidates who participate, the more funding you would get, because
That would be correct.
You have more work, if you have more candidates, because they have to verify the, they have to do the random sampling of the $5 contributions. They have to monitor the reports to make sure they're following all the rules, et cetera. Okay, one other thing, so now kind of getting into some of the work that we did in the last month. So the biggest change is, as you know, back in, I don't know, May, or whenever it was that we first proposed this, we had, of course, our first public hearing on this. We got public comment at that time. Second hearing was August 6, when we had, I think, 11 people here that spoke. 10 spoke in favor, one spoke against. The mayor suggested, at our August 6 meeting, that we hold a public forum. That was a very fruitful process. We had, I think it was 70 or so people that showed up to that forum. At that forum, two-to-one were in support of the clean election system in principle. Now, many of those who expressed support had concerns with the funding mechanism. And that was something I think we all heard. We all got emails about this, you know, many folks who were saying, you know, I'm interested in this idea, but I really don't like attaching it to criminal civil citations. And just so you know, the genesis of that was, we were just mirroring the state system. Now, apparently, and I'm actually in this camp, in our city, there's a, a large number of people that don't believe that that's how we should fund it. And I, and I agree. And I think the members of the work group agree. And we came to another conclusion, based on a lot of the feedback that we got, that we should spread it more broadly across the, the different constituencies of Tempe. And so, the new funding mechanism that we're proposing, that's contained both in the ordinance, and I'll, and I'll get to the change in the resolution, is a 20-cent flat fee per month on all city utility customers that would come on that city services bill that includes water, trash collection, and the H2O program, and wastewater. One of the other things that we included, which was a great suggestion, I can't remember which of my two colleagues in the work group that came up with this idea, was the opt-out for people who are below, Colby, who are below the federal poverty level. And so, if you, and all you would have to do is sign an affidavit, send it into the, to the city, and say, I'm below the federal poverty level, and you could actually opt out of this. Now, one of the questions that came up was, what's the administrative burden of that? That question was asked of Ken Jones in our meeting, and he said, you know, it wouldn't be too substantial of an administrative burden in order to just take that line out of them for people who turn in that affidavit. Next point, in terms of the concerns that were expressed at our August 6 meeting, about the first-come, first-served issue and the potential that could give benefit to potentially incumbents, although Lauren made the point at the public meeting, that actually it was the challengers who were the first to file their petition signatures in the last election. But in terms of those concerns, we were all concerned about that. Corey and I had an extensive discussion about this, and, and kind of came up with a strategy of, rather than sort of guessing at how candidates would have, whether or not they would have used it, we actually contacted, I personally, contacted every person who ran for council or mayor in the last four election cycles, other than the people on the council who I wasn't allowed to talk to, who other people talked to for me. So
Ooh, mileage.
What's that? We cleared it through Judy, by the way. We cleared how to do that through Judy. So anyway, that analysis came back and showed, and I've shared it with the other two members of the work group. That said, we had people who asked to not have that information released publicly. So we'll just give you sort of the result of it, which was, I think we all feel pretty comfortable that the amount that we are intending to raise is more than sufficient to fund the system that we're proposing. After looking at the results, it was, it was, that was pretty clear, that even if there were to be a substantial increase, even a doubling of the number of participating candidates, that if you look at history, we still would have had enough funding out of this revenue model to fund the number of candidates. And so, the goal is to not run out, because there shouldn't be an unfair advantage. And that's how the state clean election system was set up, and that's why in 15 years, they never have run out. They've never had that issue come up, or they've had to do the first-come, first-served. Another point, although the proposal that will be discussed Another point, although the proposal that will be discussed later on the agenda, which I am a huge fan of, by the way, because it also includes a component, which is the electronic financing, which is something I introduced earlier this year, it doesn't solve the problems that clean elections solves. For example, a candidate who wants to be competitive, still has to play the same game that candidates had to play in 2012. If we go back to the 2012 limits, basically, we're saying, we're going to structure it exactly like it was structured in that election, with the addition of electronic filing. And I like the real-time idea, that's really fascinating, and hopefully, we can find a way to make that work with the Secretary of State. But they'll still have to play under those same rules, raising money from those who have it, and who are willing to spend it, which often includes political action committees. You might remember that in 2012, political action committees were still authorized to give money, they were authorized to give more money than individuals were, thousands of dollars. And we will, and, and when a PAC gives a candidate money directly, we talk about disclosure, that is not, the, the people who are actually giving the money is not disclosed. All you see is a line item that says, "This political action committee gave this amount of money." So, the clean elections does alleviate that, because a candidate, a clean elections candidate won't accept PAC money. They can't, it's actually explicitly prohibited. Might PAC or other moneyed interests go around the process and do independent expenditures instead, this, this issue has come up? They might, but neither proposal will solve that problem. If you lower the PAC contribution limits, if you create clean elections, if someone is so intent on being involved in that election, that they want to go do an IE, they're going to do it. The problem is, is that we're not the US Supreme Court, and so we don't have any say in undoing Citizens United, and so IEs will be allowed. That said, we do have the power to change things in our little piece of the world, and that's what, that's what this proposal would do. You heard tonight, the other, the other great point, I think you heard tonight, which I just want to comment on, and then, and then really open it up for questions and discussion, after I introduce the change in the resolution, is you heard from this young ASU student, who, I think he was at our session last Monday, although, I don't, I don't think I've ever met him in any way before, I don't know that he's been directly involved in the political process, he seemed to communicate to us that he hasn't been, but he said that he and the friends that he's talked to at ASU are more likely, not to run necessarily, but just to vote, more likely to be engaged in the political process, if something like clean elections exists. And that, to me, communicates something that we haven't talked a lot about, which is the increased voter participation, not just candidate participation, but voter participation. So the last thing I want to hit, and then I, I'm happy to answer questions about this big ordinance, which is, and Judy as well, I know is available to answer questions, but the change that we made in the resolution was, the three of us talked in our work group, and we agreed that whether we are compelled or not to put the funding mechanism in the charter amendment, we want to do that. That if we're going to put it, something on the ballot before the voters, that we want it to be fully transparent. We don't want, I don't think anyone would be under the delusion, especially given the precedent this has already received, that this system is free, and that no one has to pay anything. But, it is just that much more transparent to put actually in the charter amendment, that we would be raising funding in order to do this. And so, the sentence, "For the purpose of funding the alternative campaign finance system created by this section, the city council shall have the power to levy a flat fee to be paid by all city utility customers, which shall not at any point exceed 1% of the average city utility bill." So what that does is, it puts it in the, on the ballot, that there is a funding mechanism, that it, that it's all city utility customers, and it puts a cap, like, like our existing charter language does with the excise tax, it puts a cap on what the council can do without going to the ballot. Did I describe that right? Okay. And so, I think that that's important, I think all three of us agreed that we should be transparent about that, and put it actually in the resolution that would send the charter amendment to the ballot. So, I know there's lots of other facets to this, the 21-page ordinance, I thank you guys for taking the time to research it and understand it, especially these two guys who've looked at like, six different versions of it, and, and our, and our staff as well, but I'm happy and willing to take any questions, anything about this.
Yeah. Okay. I'm looking at the report, and I see from the committee, and I'm just going to ask Council Member, Vice Mayor Woods, that he dissented. Can you help me understand that?
Sure, I can, Mayor, I can explain that. So, first of all, I wanted to say too, thank you to Councilmember Shapiro in Granville, and frankly, Councilmember QB before that, for actually working on this. And, I mean, Councilmember Shapiro especially, for all the work that he did, I mean, frankly, going back and calling candidates from all three cycles, three immediate cycles, four cycles, excuse me, mayors and council members, is a tremendous amount of work. And so he really went back and did a tremendous level of, put a lot of legwork into this whole thing, and so I really greatly appreciate that. I would say that, you know, from, one of the reasons I know why I was asked to come on the committee was to kind of, you know, work, and, because I was sort of conflicted about the whole thing during the last session, and so I wanted to say that, you know, I do think that this is a vastly improved ordinance from the one, the first one that was actually brought back to the table.
Hardly due to you, by the way.
No, I wouldn't say, no, you, I mean, you did, seriously, David, I'm going to say, you did a tremendous amount of heavy lifting, and I greatly appreciate that, and, and I've learned a lot about the process. We've all talked about how, you know, you're the one person here at this table who's actually run under the clean election system, so you are clearly the expert among the people sitting here over the system, so I appreciate that. My, I'll get more into this a little bit later, actually, because I want to, you know, hear some of the discussion, but my dissent was, at the end, I still didn't feel comfortable, not necessarily with the proposal, or the fact that it was, it was written better than it was previously, I still just didn't have a comfort level with supporting the actual program and implementation, even though I think the proposal in of itself is better than the one that we had previously. For me, going through this process actually raised more questions and more concerns than I actually had when I first started. And so that's kind of why I ended up saying, you know, during the course, you know, David and I had a pretty robust conversation at the last meeting we had, and that's why I kind of walked away feeling as if, you know, clearly, I understand the concept of majority rule, and Councilmember Shapiro in Granville said, "We feel this is good enough, we want to lend our support to this." But my perspective was, I just, at the end of the day, didn't support it. I can give my reasons a little bit more later, but I wanted to, you know, kind of let folks go around the table first, because I think my comments might be a little long, so I figured I'd break it up a little bit.
Any other comments? Mr. Granville?
Yeah, I mean, I, I've been working on this for, I don't know how long we've been working on this now, for six months? And, and to be fair, you told us this when we started on it, you, when you first brought it up to Cow, you said, "This is a big, you know, thing to get our hands around." And, and it has been, and it's been a learning process for me, I think, for sure, you know, maybe a bit of a learning process for Lauren, maybe a bit of a learning process for you, as I've seen you try and adapt what the state has done to a different environment in the city. And I do appreciate Councilman Woods coming and being on the committee, because I think, I don't know, you do what you always do, you come with a lot of honesty, and a lot of, a lot of willingness to listen, and I think, frankly, from my standpoint, that's all I can ever ask for, right? You know, sometimes you agree, sometimes you disagree, but if you at least know you got a fair shake at it, done and done. For me, of course, I think this is an important proposal, I haven't kept that a secret, I've gone so far as to write, you know, letters about why I think it's an important proposal. I, I will say there are two reasons why I think it's an important proposal. Number one is it makes an incumbent have to respond to a challenger. And I can give you a great example, I don't know if he's still here, but Ernesto was here earlier, he raised like $5,000, or $10,000, or something like that, and, and you saw him in the debates, and he had some ideas I agreed with, and some I didn't, and that's fine, but the important thing about that is, for $5,000 or $7,000, as an incumbent, I never have to say anything. For $5,000, you can never say anything loud enough to affect my polling. You really can't. I mean, maybe if, you know, something crazy, crazy, crazy happened, but if you've got $25,000, it does an important thing, it makes a challenger ask an incumbent a question they have to answer. Because for $25,000, if you're asking the right questions about my votes, or anyone's votes, not mine specifically, because mine are all perfect, but if, but it requires the challenger to have to respond, right? This is why challengers, this is why incumbent, or the incumbent have to respond. This is why incumbents that are winning by 30 percentage points, or whatever, they don't ever go to the debates, because all it does is make your opponent look legitimate, and it makes you have to speak in a public setting, and as soon as you speak, as soon as I say I like choice A versus choice B, automatically, I've turned off 30% of the people, because regardless of the issue, 20 or 30% of the people disagree with every issue. If I don't have to ever answer, then I get 100% of the people. If I just say, "How's the wife and kids?" and shake hands all day. And as an incumbent, I can win an election shaking hands and saying, "How's the wife and kids?", if I don't have an incumbent that can raise money, or if I don't have a challenger that can raise money. So the first thing I think it does, is it requires an incumbent to answer a challenger's questions, because they can say them loud enough. The second thing I do, I think it does, is I think it gives incumbents freedom to speak freely. I'll say, from my own personal standpoint, I think there are times when I've heard people say, "Oh, you know, if I do that, I'm going to get beat up by this group in the next election, I can't do that, like, I, I can't do it." And here's the thing, I can't even say the name of the group that the people are referring to, because I'm afraid of those people, too. And so I can't say, "Well, Group A said this, and so this council member said, if they vote this way, Group A is going to bring something up against them in the next election," or run a challenger specifically against them. I can't even say the name of Group A, sitting here as an incumbent. If I had the ability to say, like, "Look, Group A does this thing, and I think it's horrible," and I thought, "You know what, I don't care, because I can get my $25,000, and I'm going to run anyway," that frees me up to actually say truthful things. And so if you've got the ability to have a challenger force an incumbent to answer questions, and give an incumbent the freedom to speak truthfully, I think the rest we can haggle over, I think the rest we can figure out. And thank you for letting me finish, by the way, Mayor, I appreciate that.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you. Just one quick comment on one of council, and then not to be, you know, combative on that end, but I will say, clearly, I mean, there is a potential on, on point number one, about saying an incumbent, because they feel like they're so far ahead in terms of name identification, may just choose to say, "I'm the equivalent of football, I'm going to take a knee and let the clock run out." But I haven't seen that. I mean, I've run in three elections in the city, in 2006, 2008, and 2012. As a matter of fact, the only time I saw a person not show up to an actual debate, was a couple of times when Councilmember Arredondo Savage ran, and the person who was the challenger, one of them, did not show up to a couple of forums. Every time I saw, the incumbents were there, as well as the challengers. Now, I'm not saying that it's, that it's not possible, that that couldn't happen...
You're right.
But what I'm saying is, during the time that I've actually been involved in a lot of campaigns in this city, I have never actually seen the incumbents, for, for, you know, for lack of a better term, take a knee and just simply say, "I am so far ahead, that I'm not going to do that." Matter of fact, I'll just say this, and I'll be quiet again, you and I even had conversations during and after my race, and, our, both of our races in 2011, 12, where you said, "Cory, I felt that you were so far ahead, that I couldn't understand why you were working so hard. You were out every single day, knocking on doors, talking to residents, doing, and I was still showing up to forums, and I was still trading punches and jabbing at people." You know, and so my perspective was, my integrity and my ethics wouldn't allow me to simply say, "I'm going to take a knee." My attitude is, I'm going to show up, because the residents who elected me, I'm going to show up and actually give answers, and if the residents like those answers, I'll be back, if they don't, I'll go take my seat on my couch at home.
Can I just respond to that briefly, Mayor? First of all, I would say I completely agree with your assessment of what you did in 2012. I don't, I 100% agree, I think that you answered questions directly, I think that you did all the things that you just described, you certainly worked hard. And I wouldn't say that, you're right, there's not an instance of a candidate simply not showing up to a debate. But here's what I do think happens sometimes, and I, and I think we have seen this before, is you'll have an incumbent, who the candidate says, "What's the first three things you would do when you, if you were reelected?" And they go, "Well, you know, the important thing is here is that we listen to feedback from neighbors, and that we reach out to our important constituent groups, and that we focus on the things that make Tempe great." And they give three minutes of nothing. Because they can.
Fair point, absolutely.
Because they can.
I think, Mayor, just to that point, that there's, there's some great commentaries on the effects of public financing out there, some of which we talked about last time, and one, one of the things that's commonly talked about is that it's, it's not, so, I mean, I think ultimately, it does have an effect on the incumbents to some extent, but I think the more important thing is, Colby's first point, which is, it gives, it gives that candidate a chance to amplify their message, it gives the challenger candidate a chance to amplify their message, and to, and, and, you know, I, I've run maybe a different kind of campaign, well, I, I think we all want to say, we all run positive campaigns, right? But we all know that there's candidates out there that run exclusively negative campaigns. I ran in one race, which I know you all saw, you had front row seats to, where I was up against two other candidates who spent more money attacking me than I spent advocating for myself, and I spent all of mine advocating for myself, because I didn't run a single attack piece, not one, didn't spend a penny on attacking anybody. And, the problem is, is in that kind of race, a candidate like me got drowned out, because I, I couldn't compete. I couldn't compete with the amount of money that was being spent, I was outspent four or five to one. And that's a very different kind of race, I know, than we're talking about here, but we do see candidates like Ernesto and others, who are outspent four or five to one, and, you know, you're up against a candidate who goes negative, and we have seen that certainly in city elections, we've absolutely seen very negative campaigns in city elections. And when a candidate, you know, let's say Ernesto were up in the polls, let's say he ran a Cory Woods, or a Lauren QB style campaign, and knocked on tens of thousands of doors, and he was up in the polls, but now, because he only has $5,000, $6,000, and his opponent has 40, his opponent starts hammering him, and sending out mail piece after mail piece, and radio ads, and going on TV, and Ernesto can't even respond. I mean, I had things said about me that were flatly false, and all I could do is walk into the phone bank and say, "Hey, guys, when you talk to the voters tonight, my volunteers, when you talk to voters tonight, please dispel this thing that's just false." You know, that I support private school vouchers, which is just ridiculous, right? Remember that?
Totally.
And I, but see, a candidate like, I didn't, I couldn't, I couldn't even compete in amplifying my message. Now, when I ran for the legislature, I was a challenger my first race, against a 10-year incumbent in a district where that person's party had the registration advantage, and nobody would have ever thought I had a chance. In fact, the district Democrats at the time told me that I was going to hurt the, Ed Ablesser, who we all know, that I was going to hurt his chances by running, because we were only going to get one Democrat in. And what they weren't accounting for was clean elections. Because I knocked on 7,000 doors in that campaign, but I also had enough money to get my voice out there, and get my message out there, which, which was an exclusively positive one, to tell people about myself, and to, and to be able to overcome that advantage that that 10-year incumbent had. And that, to me, is the bigger, is the bigger issue there, when you're talking about the incumbent-challenger relationship, is giving, giving the challenger an opportunity to compete.
Councilmember QB?
And I want to talk about a little bit of chatter that's been going around, not, not necessarily, necessarily, sorry, on the council, but that I've heard from constituents or residents, and that it's somehow that David is pushing forward the system, because he doesn't want to fundraise, he doesn't like to fundraise, well, first of all, nobody likes to fundraise, but, and I'm going to talk very honestly and openly about the past election. So, the past election cycle, I, you know, I worked and raised money, and I think I exceeded everybody's fundraising amounts. David had a fundraiser, he had one fundraiser, he made a few calls, money just came into him, because he, you know, he's very well-known, he's been on the ballot so many times, since what, 2006? So, the money came very easily to him. So the idea that somehow he's putting this system forward, so he can benefit, so he can get $25,000 and not have to fundraise, is so patently absurd, I, I just have to laugh. You know, this system will not benefit any of us, most likely. I, I don't, I will run, if this system is passed, I will run clean, because I want to put, I want to walk the talk and, and put my money where my mouth is, or not put my money where my mouth is. But to me, it's about, it's about honoring the system that would support you, so I would want to, you know, promote that, and try and ensure that all, that people had an opportunity to run, that, that there weren't barriers to people running, that, that candidates were made viable, who would not necessarily be viable without clean election system. And the idea that somehow the incumbents might be benefiting from this, because they can not have to raise money, is just absurd.
It's a disadvantage for incumbents, there's no question.
It's a disadvantage for incumbents, there's no question.
It's a disadvantage. So, all of us have sort of a self-interest here. So, my main goal, my main object is to say, we need to put this on the ballot. To do anything else is to take a self-interested position, and I think we really need to give it to the voters. We know from polling work that's been done, you know, polls aren't everything, but we know that there's a majority of people that support this, so not to put this on the ballot, and not to open up the political process to a more diverse community, because we're only going to become more diverse. And I think that running for election isn't just a game that you play by doing, following a certain playbook, by joining Tempe leadership, by serving on boards and commissions.
The Kiwanis Club.
Kiwanis Club, or Boys and Girls Club. It's not the step thing that you have to do to join this club, so that when you're a certain age, or a certain level of experience, you can run. Why, we can be 18 years old and run for city council in Tempe. Why can't we have someone who's in their early twenties, who's a school of sustainability graduate student, or has graduated from the school, who has great ideas for sustainability, and he thinks we're not putting the pieces together, we're not bridging the gap, and that person has a passion to run? Why do we want to erect a barrier, and our current system does erect barriers?
Mr. Mayor Woods?
Just, first, one of the comments, Councilmember Cubey said, I definitely would never want to say that, you know, that Councilmember Shapiro was ever creating the system for himself personally, because he doesn't want to fundraise.
No, I didn't say he did.
No, and I mean, David, you're one of the smartest, most hardworking people that I know, frankly, and so honestly, I know that you're doing this because you passionately believe that this is the right thing to do, and it's not to benefit yourself, and I would, I don't think anyone here would ever accuse you of that. I know, Lauren, that's not what you were saying either, so.
Yeah, right.
But I know that, I have heard that too, in the community, and I agree, I'll dispel that upfront. My thing, you know, going back, is talking a little bit about my own personal story with some of this, and I understand some of what's been said, but a lot of people remember back in 2006, I ran the first time, and I lost my first race. Probably raised about $10,000, I did a lot of work, but I didn't win. And after that campaign, I didn't sort of seek out to join a whole bunch of boards, so I could kind of get into the Tempe establishment. There were folks who began to email me, and call me, and bump into me in certain places, and said, you know, Corey, you were a really good candidate, I liked what you had to say. A lot of people just didn't know you, because there are a lot of folks who've been around a little bit longer than you, or you haven't been in the community very long, or maybe your depth of the issues wasn't as great, because you hadn't been around. And so I had folks all of a sudden call me and say, there's a slot on the Boys and Girls Club Board that's open, there's a slot on the Tempe Community Action Agency Board that's open, there's a slot on the Communities and Schools Board that's open. And so my perspective was, I was eager to join a lot of those things, because I wanted to learn more about the community. It wasn't simply from my perspective to get elected or join an establishment club, it was because I wanted to learn more about the issues that actually affected myself and Tempe residents. Many people know that my mother was a teacher, my father worked in human services and nonprofit work, and so I ended up on boards that actually related to a lot of the things that my parents taught me coming up. And in 2008, I ran again, and that time I actually won. I saw, you know, Dave Wells, who was here a little bit earlier, who's a friend of a lot of us on the council. Dave, I remember, wrote an article back then, that actually said that I think that I was the person back in that 2007, 2008 campaign, where the majority of my money was clearly coming in small contributions from Tempe residents. And on a personal level, I was knocking on doors, and talking to people, and raising money. I didn't find it to be challenging in any way, shape, or form. Actually, as a matter of fact, I told the people on my campaign team in all three of my elections, during the time that we actually have daylight, whether it's the weeknights or the weekends, that's the time we spend talking to voters. We're not going to spend any time raising money, when I could actually be out connecting with Tempe residents. I don't think it's getting $5 contributions that makes you connect with Tempe residents, I think that's about your own personal drive. Do you make the decision that you actually want to go out, and give up your days, and your nights, and your weekends, to go out and actually talk to people, or do you not want to do it? I don't believe that getting the $5 contributions makes you a more dedicated candidate, when it comes to actually talking to voters. That's about what burns inside of you, if you actually think that's important to do. And during all of my campaigns, I hit thousands of doors, because for me, that was part of my values, that was part of who I was, and I think that was largely how I became successful at this. The last point I'll make, and then I'll stop, is that a lot of the board service that I gained, you know, during the, you know, seven years I've been on council, and even before that, has actually helped me, I believe, be a better council member. I think about, you know, when I first got on, the permanent supportive housing project we did in Tempe, we were the first city in the Valley to partner with Valley of the Sun United Way, to actually learn how to do, how to not do traditional homeless methods, but to house 31 chronically homeless people with stimulus money we got from the federal government. And that was a very challenging program, given the fact that we were putting chronically homeless individuals in apartments with people who are otherwise normally functioning. But the fact is, through my time on the Tempe Community Action Agency Board, I met some other people in human services, I met Kate Hanley from Tempe Community Council, she introduced me to Merle Waschler, who's the head of the United Way, and he said, I want a council that actually has the political will to implement this program, and that's what we did. And now it's raining. So, and that actually passed 7-0 for this council. We took a very big risk with a lot of residents who might have been very concerned about it. But the fact of the matter is, that's what we did. The only last thing I'm going to point out too, in terms of a lot of that board service, was, last year, we actually passed an anti-discrimination ordinance, which passed this council 7-0. I'm on the Equality Arizona Board, I have been for quite some time now, and part of my understanding of the issues, as well as the solutions, but also knowing the people who are big players in that field, was from spending time on that board. I came to understand exactly how politics worked, and how government worked, and a lot of the issues, and actually how to solve them. So, the board service, from my perspective, was not for the purpose of getting elected or staying elected, it was about learning more about the issues, and learning the best way to move things through. And so all of those things would ever have been extremely beneficial to me, and I don't think that that has anything to do with clean elections or traditional financing. I think that has to do with who you are as a person, and who you are as a candidate, and the effort that you put forth.
I'm going to let everybody talk, and some people have already talked, so I want to say something, and then we'll go back around, some that haven't talked, then we'll go back to people that want to make additional comments. And Corey, to Corey's point of public involvement, I think, I don't think that's a bad thing. I mean, that's one of the things, I think, being involved in your community, you get to understand your residents, and you get to understand the people you're representing. And over the course of this debate, you know, it's been fairly simple, and it's been a good debate. You know, it's also been implied that some of us, me included, are only in office due to a family name. Some of us, some people have even gone so far as to attack the character of some council members, and make a case that if a member of this body would oppose this plan, it's because they're corrupt. And over the course of this debate, over the course of this debate, I feel like at times, it has gotten out of hand, and I understand why. Because we have passionate people on the city council, and who care deeply about this community. And I'm one of those people that care very deeply about this community, and passionate. And I must say, that some of the debate, this type of debate that's actually have taken place, is part of the problem. And what I mean by that is, the reason why, part of the problem is, the reason a lot of people don't vote, is because they get turned off. They get turned off by attacks, and there's been attacks. And people don't like this type of political discourse. And frankly, that really isn't the Tempe I know, it wasn't the Tempe that I was raised in, and I sure don't think it would be the Tempe I'd like to raise my two daughters in. And so I'm going to tell you what my view is on this issue, and the proposal. You know, I didn't commission a poll, I didn't, you know, to tell me what to say, or what to agree with, and a poll, whether decide whether voters, whether they agree with me or not. You know, I did a lot of research, I talked to a lot of individuals, and a lot of people in the community, and after going, listening to some public debate, and some input, I can say that I am not in favor of this plan. And I believe that the proposal was crafted, I don't believe the proposal was crafted to solve a particular problem, and a specific problem, and that's fine. I think the proposal was crafted, because I think a lot of people that support this idea, they support publicly financed campaign elections, and that's fine. There's nothing wrong with people supporting publicly financed clean elections. And I, what I do agree with, that we need to address some of the challenges of the new contribution limits that our state legislature has imposed on us, you know, against our will, that has been created. And I don't think the proposal that's before us, this proposal, really addresses some of those challenges, and it's been set. And later tonight, you're going to hear the beginnings of a new proposal, that I believe that does address those challenges, as we move forward. And, you know, bottom line is, I'm not in favor of a tax, especially tax dollars going to fund elections for politicians. It's clear to me that our residents have higher priorities, when it comes to our priority needs and our services that we've asked our residents. And I don't think using tax dollars, or a tax, for political candidates, that they could use that to buy campaign signs, to do mobile calls, to, you know, send out mailers, either for or against you. I don't think that's really the best use of some of the taxpayer monies. And I just don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right for taxpayers' money. And, you know, since the Supreme Court has basically eliminated matching funds, and the Supreme Court has allowed unlimited dark money, the proposal doesn't take care of any of that, and it was already stated here. I mean, it doesn't solve any of that. So, that's where I stand on this.
Could I, you said I could.
Yes.
I just want to talk about.
Joel had his hand up, too.
Way before that, way before that. Anyway, so, I was on Team Woods since 2006. I think I was one of your biggest supporters, and probably knocked as many doors as, not as you, but as anyone. And Corey, you ran the best campaign. You talked to the voters, you learned so much from the voters, I saw you grow as a person, as a candidate. I was one of the people that said to you, and I said to you, and I was with you, it brought you to so many meetings, you have to meet this person, you have to meet that person, Corey, you need to get on boards and commissions, you need to do this, you should do value, you should do value leadership, you should do Tempe leadership. I was one of the people that advised you that. And Corey, you should have won that race. By all rights, you should have won that race. If you had had $10,000 or $15,000 more dollars, you would have run that race, because you would have been able to get your message out to the voters, that you reached, and you talked to, and you spoke to, and you sat in their room, and had coffee and pie, pecan pie. I mean, you should have won that race. By all means, you're actually an example, you're the poster child for this system, because if we had had a clean election system, you would have been viable, and you still would have had to work your butt off, which you did, and you would have been victorious. It took two years, two more years, and we were deprived of all that you could have brought us in those two years. And I'm not saying that the only route to running for office should be clean elections, there's many different routes you can run, as somebody who starts from the school board, or someone's invested, involved in education all their life, as someone who's been like a searching, questioning person, and someone who takes a very critical eye at, you know, all aspects of public policy, and looks to protect the most vulnerable, as someone who comes from a firefighter's perspective, who understands what it's like to be a first responder, and respects that. I mean, there's so many different routes you can come to office, but it shouldn't be the only route, it shouldn't be the establishment route. We should be able to have a system that will allow for somebody to at least be viable, at least to be viable. And this, I think this proposal that we've developed, at least deserves a chance to be viable, and to be put before the voters. I think to do anything else is just, it's just not, it's not right for Tempe's values, and I'll throw that back at you, Mark. I think Tempe's values are such, that they say, we want to make this process open to people, we want to make it more open to candidates, to engagement, and the argument about incumbency, that you're, you are less likely to knock doors, you end up, I mean, I've seen it from my short time in the council, there's so many meetings, there's so many opportunities to meet with the neighborhood leaders, you get the sort of false sense that you're in touch with everything going on in Tempe. And when you actually think about the people you've met in person, that you've talked to, and you know, maybe it's like 400 people, but you need 9,500 more people to vote for you, people that will never recognize your face, or see you, but they might get your message somehow. So, when you're an incumbent, it's very easy, when the money comes in, and the limits are $6,250 for a primary now, when that money comes in, it's so easy to say, you know, I'm so busy as a council member, I'm going to just, I'm going to just purchase signatures, and it's just easier for me to do it that way, and knock on doors. It's way easier to do that, and we're seeing that start to happen. And I think the clean election system encourages you to spend time with the voters, to knock on doors, and to be really engaged, and meet people at the doors, not people who represent influencers in the community, but they're not the community entirely.
Thank you, Lauren. I appreciate it. Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, just a couple of things I want to say, first and foremost. I mean, I appreciate anybody that has the passion that you guys do, and I really do appreciate that, because it's been a lot of work. And I know, whether it's, you know, our staff members, or David, or your team, so I definitely do appreciate that, and I know there's been a lot of times where I get really worked up, because I get so passionate, and just really involved in certain things. So, I appreciate that, and I know you're doing it, because you believe this is the right thing to do, and it's not self-serving by any means, and so to dispel any of that, I think that's definitely a necessity. But, you know, I'll just kind of go back, and first and foremost, I do want to say, I loved the way that we were able to get more public comment, and to get that feedback, and to not only get it from people at that public meeting, but also via email, out in the community, whether I was at the grocery store, getting my hair done, it was kind of one of those topics of discussion. So, it was really great to, I think, be able to hear from the community, they had the opportunity to weigh in. So, I certainly do appreciate that. I kind of want to go back to something that the mayor mentioned, and that's in regards to the problem that we're trying to solve. It was very interesting to hear people come up in support of this proposal, and talk about how great Tempe is, to talk about how much they love being a part of this community. Somebody specifically said that Tempe is a crown jewel. Well, that didn't happen by accident. It happened by having really great leaders seated around this table, sitting up there, doing what was right for Tempe, doing what was right for their residents. So, I want to say, we have great quality people right here around this table now, we have had quality people as leaders in the past, and they've really put Tempe in a really good position moving forward. And I'm really proud of the work that we've been able to do, and the work that those that came before us did also. But like I said, that didn't happen by accident. And it happened with the program, and election process, that is currently in place, and I'm trying to figure out exactly, what problem are we trying to solve? I don't think that anybody that hasn't used a clean election system is influenced or corrupt, I don't believe that at all. I think our voters have been very smart, and picked a lot of really wonderful leaders to get Tempe to where it is today. So, while I look to that, I do realize, I think there's been some really good things that have come out of this discussion. I think the limits that we talk about, the new limits, I mean, that's, I think that could be something that we should definitely address. I think that is pretty significant amount, and a really big jump. So, I definitely am not opposed to that. I love the idea of us trying to go electronic, I think that's really good when it comes to filing, and to be more transparent, and I think one of the other things, too, with clean elections that they do, too, is the reporting frequency. So, if that's something that we're able to fix, I get that, I think that's something that's really great. And another thing for me is, you know, I've been here long enough to really understand that when people see their water bill, they don't really love it. And we are going to have some challenges in the years to come, anyway, with, we know those rates are going to go up, and I definitely have some concerns about that, and to impose another fee on top of that, to do it, kind of works, it's just not something that I'm struggling to be able to do that. I get the opt-out part, I think that's really nice, especially those individuals that can't afford it. But, you know, to impose even just 20 cents, I think that's just not the way we should do it on the backs of residents, and I don't really think that's the best way to go. And I, one of the things also, too, is if we are creating a new revenue stream, if there is new revenue to be had in the city of Tempe, I have not heard over the last five years, that this is the priority, that working on a different campaign, a different election process is a hot topic, a hot topic or a high priority. So, for me, it's just kind of really difficult. I mean, I said it before, I'll say it again, I appreciate the work that's really gone into this, I think it's brought some clarity to a lot of things. I don't support this program moving forward, but I am very curious about the other item that is on the agenda, about maybe addressing some of those things that I think have really rose into the surface. So, I'm anxious to see what might come to light through that, but to me, this is just not the way to go. But I definitely respect your opinion, and I respect your passion, I just have to say that I just don't agree.
Councilman Navarro?
Yeah, this is exhausting. This is one of those things, you know, and David, you do have a great passion on this, this is beautiful, it's beautiful about the council and everything we do here, you know, it's kind of like me with ADOT Park, passion for six years, I think, seven years, eight years. And, but the thing is, it still gets shot down with holes and stuff, asthma, too close to the road, people still don't, you know, there's still concerns, and they ask questions. And that's what I want to do, I mean, I have concerns, and I want to ask questions. To Robin's point, I just, I never, you know, going out, talking to people, and everything on the radar screen, this has never been up there. And when I think about what I'm doing for the city, what I want to achieve, man, I think about the parks, just like you guys do. I think about, for me, right-of-way with the trees, and the vegetation, and the establishment of right-of-way walls, improving neighborhoods, man, I'm hitting up there. And that's what's on my radar right now. And I do have to bring this up, and we're talking about it, and debating it, and it's great we're having this debate about it, but when I was thinking about stuff, I'm just But when I was thinking about stuff, I'm just like, constantly, I'm like, man, we're in Tempe. We are so different than any other city out there. This is not Phoenix, this is not Glendale, this is not Scottsdale, man. We got Tempe here, and people are engaged. No, no, people are engaged in Tempe, people love the community. When I talk to people outside of our community, envy our community. When I talk about developers, or all these people, they want to be in this community. But they want to be in this community is relations. They want to be in this community because we're doing things, not us, but councils before us did things to get us on the map. We got on the map, and we're probably out of recovery faster than any other city out there because of the, of the relationships that we build, not just by our community, but by our business people and a variety of different corporations, all that we have to listen to. But who gets me elected? The voters. And if I don't go out there and talk to the voters, if I don't go out there and debate all the time, I'm going to lose. I, I've tried to go back and think of, of what candidate out there that we had on council just kind of sat back and just didn't do nothing. They all stressed about going to get elections. They all stressed about walking the streets. They all stressed about talking to voters. Because bottom line is, that's what's going to have to happen. I go right now door-to-door to get signatures. I hit every door and door to get signatures, not just the doors that voters are at, because we all have lists on who to hit and who voted last time, and it makes it easier on everybody. I go to every door, okay? And you get to hear from the voters, because I ask them, are you a registered voter? Yes. And then they tell me, God, would, you know, how do you vote? Well, you know, not, because I don't have much time, or whatever it may be, or I don't like this issue, and here's my, 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 here's my opinion on it, you know? But the fact is though, I would love to get new voters. And that's what I'm hoping to do when I go door-to-door, is to get new voters, you know? And if they, if they sit there and engage with me more, I'm like, well, would you contribute to my campaign? I don't care how much they would give, $1, $2, $3, great. That's great. But that's on me. And that's been on every candidate that has ran this race. They've had to ask for money. When I first started out, all my money came from in the city, but a lot of it came from out of the city. Same with Colby's and the variety of other people. You know why? Because my friends from college are out of the state, my relatives are out of the state. I had to start from the, from the ground level, beg, and that was the hardest damn thing ever. I mean, we all hated it. But the thing is too, though, to Cory's point, it does say a lot, because Tempe is engaged, that they want to see people that are established in the community. They want to see people that have done things in the community. Lauren, you've done so much in this community, you know, and they know you. You're a workhorse. Dave, you're the same thing.
I would have never been elected, no second.
But, but, but the thing is though, it, it is going door-to-door. It is talking to the voters. And, and, and who I, who I hear the most is almost the emails I get, and they, we get them all the time. And we try to please those people more than we try to please developers or anybody else. I've had developers, and everybody's giving me a bunch of money, and I've gone head-to-head with them. I mean, we've all gone head-to-head with them, and they've contributed every one of our campaigns. But the beautiful thing about it is, we didn't back down. We did what was good for this city. And we still continue on what's good for this city. And I have not yet seen candidates that, that just kind of wiggle here, wiggle there. If they do, a lot of this council, at least the council I've been on, has always put them in check, you know? And we've always asked the hard questions and the tough questions. This council has gotten better, extremely better. I don't want to take something that I don't know is broke or not and just, and just throw it away, when I think that something's good. Now, do I agree that the limits are, are high? Yeah, they're ridiculous, it's stupid. You know, nobody, even the, even the candidate, even the people that I think have the money, they're like, that's stupid. And I, and I agree. It is dumb. And I think we need to look at that stuff. You know, when I, when I think about, you know, does this stop dark money? I mean, you even said it last time, Dave, I think it increases it. And, and you kind of said that too, Dave, last time.
Yeah, neither one would stop either proposal.
But I think you, I think we agree, it would increase it, because now candidates are, that's going to increase, because they're going to have dark money trying to support candidates, because they can't contribute to their campaign. In my opinion, I think it increases. When you talk about, we're opening up and, and funding candidates, I, I think about this. Sure, you're going to get the fringe. You even said that too, Dave, on the, on the, you're going to get the radicals on the left, you're going to get the radicals on the right. How many will you get? Eh, you're going to get one or two, then you have to fund them. Then who's to say you're going to get the college grads that's going to do the Joel Palooza and spend the 25 grand on a campaign party, and it'll be one great big party? You know, that's, we could go, and we can go, you know, what could she do? I'm just saying, just like everything else, we can shoot holes in, I'm just saying there are possibilities, okay? So I bring these possibilities out. So I'm trying to wonder, is this a good possibility or not a good possibility? When I think about programs, and I think about, and this is what, it, it's hard to put around, we, I know we talk about childhood child education, and, and the golden number was $100,000 we need to fund a year. You found $100,000, in my opinion. Well, no, 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 but to fund a teacher for a startup. Well, one classroom, yeah. That, that's a starting point. That's a starting point. And in my mind, if I was going to go to, to a voter and say, you want to fund a politician, or you want to help childhood development?
One class.
What, I don't care. I don't care, one class, it's better than helping these seven here, in my opinion. I would rather help those kids to try to get into a better position, and to advertise the hell out of that position, to make it part of our community. That's what I would rather do. And when I talk about swimming pools, when I talk about, here's another thing that I'm, I have to work on, is elderly. And I, it's, but it's my turn, and I listen to everyone's turn, okay? And the thing is, is this, that's, this is, I'm not trying to say I'm going for it or against it, I'm just, I'm just throwing these out there, and if you guys want to listen, this is the opportune time. So when I, when I, when I sit there and I, and I talk about elderly programs, which I'm, I'm now trying to do, and my dad's involved, and everyone's involved, my, our parents are getting old, there comes this, this ride situation. Here's a program where the cab vouchers would be perfect for the elderly, and, and a program with my water bill can pay for cab vouchers. I think of things like that, you know? So those come to priority in, in my life, as opposed to funding elections. I see the advantage, I understand where you're at, I understand you probably even more for a legislator running around clean. But then when I look at the state legislative over the past, when, when did this start? 97?
2000 was the first election.
2000? 2000 to where are we at now? I don't really see, I, I mean, the state's horrible as it is, but we had Russell Pierce run on clean elections. Did he not? That's what, I, I've had republic, I've had Republicans run. Check it back, because I know he did. But, but you have Republicans who fought against it, run on clean and benefit from it. So yeah, they're going to, they're going to win too. You know, and it's not to say that, that because they have name recognition, you have name recognition, I might benefit from it too, but you're going to have IEs, everyone's going to have IEs, and I don't know what we're really fixing. That's, 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 I'm just throwing it out there, guys. I know, I want to hear what the proposal is.
Wrap this up. It sounds like there's consensus not to move forward with this, Mayor.
He didn't know if he supported it.
I'm going to ask him, because...
I wanted to know what the other proposal was.
I was going to answer his questions. I was going to answer his questions, if that's okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So to, to answer a couple of the issues, and I think there's some straw man arguments out there. First, first and foremost, I think the biggest straw man argument is that this group would be imposing anything. I mean, the word imposing a fee was, the phrase imposing a fee was used. Nobody is proposing that. All we are, all I'm asking, you know, all those of us who support this issue are asking, all the, out of the 11 people who spoke to us tonight, everyone other than the Chamber of Commerce is asking, is that this go to the ballot. I, I think it, there's a difference between saying, we have other priorities, we don't want to impose a fee for something like this, we would rather do it for X, right? And saying, hey, voters, is this, so, so we're not saying this is or isn't a priority for the voters. We're asking them a question. That's all this is doing, is saying, do the voters want this, or don't they want it? And so the one concern I have is, you know, people are, and this is a straw man argument, is that people are saying, this isn't supported by Tempeans. This isn't the priority, this isn't what's coming up. And even if you don't like polls, I find a poll more credible than someone just saying, the community doesn't like this, because I think the community doesn't like this. And what the poll showed is, that 60% of Tempe citizens want this. And I'll tell you the reason why, and Joel, you are absolutely right, there is something unique about Tempe. And I mentioned this at, at the August 6 meeting. So our favorability of, as a council is high, and it's probably higher than all the cities you name. I mean, our favorability, according to this poll commissioned by a Tempe resident, was 55.8 feel favorably, 13.5% feel unfavorably. That's awesome. I mean, I, again, I think you'd be hard pressed to find another city that has numbers that are those, that are that good. But here's the other thing that those very same voters said. They said that 43.6%, or 43.6% of them believed that lobbyists and developers and special interests had undue influence at this council. Now, whether that is true or not, the benefit of clean elections is, you start to alleviate some of that belief among the community. So the message I hear when I read this poll, when they say that they think that lobbyists and developers and special interests have undue influence, and they say that they want clean elections, 60% of them want clean elections, yet they feel that this council is good, what they are saying is, and it was kind of like Robin said, Tempe's great, Tempe's the ground, crown jewel. But there's this one little thing, this kind of nagging thing in the back of our heads, and that is, like, you know, generally, we don't really like politics that much, but also, we kind of feel like there's some, there's some influence out there. And, you know, Cory and I have talked ad nauseam about this topic. Right or wrong, right or wrong, that there's influence here, they feel that there is. And if clean elections can do something to solve that, that to me is a big deal. So back to the financial priority piece. And I think you brought up a great point on the, the 100K for, for one classroom. Others have talked about other things, like parks, the cost of, of what it would do, what it would cost to fix slides in a park, or with the fact that the city spends $300,000 a year on cleaning supplies. Those things that are priorities to us, you and I share this priority of early childhood, we all share this priority of parks, we have all these other priorities. We can't make a dent in those things for $100,000. We can't. But we could clean our elections for $100,000 a year. And whether, whether you believe that will work or not, let's let the voters decide. And that's, that's all we're asking, is to say, let's let the voters make this decision. And you know what? If they don't see it as a priority, they'll vote no. It's as simple as that.
Can I, can I ask, David, you referenced this poll. I have not seen this poll. Can you email that to the clerk and to our city attorney?
Um, she gave me, this was Bobette, who was here at our August 6 meeting, who gave us the numbers on it. I will send it.
Can you, no, can you see it? And I'd like to know, because when you do a political poll, it has to say paid for by. Otherwise, it's not legitimate, according to election laws, and, and that would be good to have that polling, because you're referencing a poll, none of us have seen this poll. It's only you said it, and I'm not saying that what you're saying...
I didn't say it, she did.
Well, even last, at the last meeting, I mean, that poll should have been entered into the packet. I mean, this is supposed to be clear and transparent, and clean and transparent elections.
Didn't do it.
But, but you reference a poll, so that I think, at least the courtesy of making sure that everybody has that poll to see what you're talking about. I mean, that's, it's at least, should be, should happen.
I'd be happy to forward it.
If you're going to reference a poll, I would hopefully, we would all have a chance to see it.
I, I just gave you the number, so I'd be happy to send it to you, what, what I've...
Vice Mayor Woods?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things, and you know, and David and I both joke about how we've had this debate, and, and actually, I really enjoyed the debate, so I wanted to...
Not to me, just to the clerk.
One of the things, in terms of talking about, you know, the ability to kind of clean the elections, but one of the challenges is, one of the people who actually came to the public meeting last Monday made a comment about saying that money is only really kind of clean or dirty depending on how you use it. You can take money as a traditional candidate, you can take money as a publicly financed candidate, and you can use that money to either push a positive message or push a negative message. I've seen people in elections, you know, in different districts, you know, take clean elections money, and just brutally attack other people's, you know, other people. So just because you're taking publicly financed money, doesn't mean you're going to be forced to run a positive message. You can use, choose to use that money for good, you can choose to use that money to tear someone down. The, the comment, you know, David about the poll, just to reference it, and talking about the, how people had a feel, had a good feeling about candidates, or the people who are currently serving on the council. The challenge is for me, and I'm not making any negative statements about the folks at the legislature, I mean, you know, you're a friend of mine, and I have plenty of friends down at the Capitol. But one of the things is that, I would imagine that probably overall, the legislature has lower approval numbers than frankly, local school boards and local city councils. And so the clean election system's been in place since 2000 statewide, but it hasn't led to residents, or you have Tempe probably, or voters of the state of Arizona feeling as if, that it's really cleaned up the elections, and they, they're getting a higher caliber of candidate. They generate, you know, the same legislature that produced, you know, things from my perspective, SB 1070 or SB 1062, which I thought were abominable pieces of legislation, and that gave Arizona a black eye, and we constantly found ourselves on The Daily Show for the wrong reasons. You know, so if I really felt that, you know, that, that the implementation of clean elections had really helped to change the tenor of the legislature and the public belt, what, they're getting so much better, you know, elected officials there than they're getting here at the city level, I might have a slightly different opinion. The thing is too, the last thing I'll say about, about the, about the influence you talk about, about developers and lobbyists and things of that nature, you know, I do believe that either the proposal later on that we're going to talk about, about reducing the actual limits, is a good one, or capping PAC contributions, I feel, I feel is also a good step. When I was running back in 2008 and 2012, I had regular residents who weren't lobbyists or developers, or independently wealthy, give me $200 or $300, or even $500. And if you, for, just, you know, per se, drop the donation limit from 2,500 down to 500, what you're really doing is eliminating a lot of that gulf, in the fact that, yes, an independently worth, wealthy person could give you 2,500, but a regular citizen just can't even get near that. But if the limits go back down to basically one-fifth of that, you are really eliminating that gulf that a person who has so much money would be able to use to drown out the average Tempe resident. So I feel like that kind of proposal frankly, gets more to the issue of getting rid of a lot of the sort of, the concern about developer and lobbyist interest because of the funding. So that's part of my, and I just don't feel that the clean elections proposal actually really addresses that issue more than the alternative proposal later on in the evening.
Let the voters decide.
Okay, we're going to, I mean, we're going to continue to have this debate. So Joel, you're going to be the deciding person on this, because are you, are you supportive of this?
I don't have to decide it, right here.
Are you...
Right now, I wouldn't go forward, that's my opinion right now.
So it seems like there's consensus not to move forward. Anyone else have any comments?
Um, well, I just want to say, about, first of all, it's a 6,250...
6,250, you're right, you're correct.
6,250 dollar limit right now, so that is mind-blowing. And this last election in 2014, it went from 435 to 2,500, and we were just starting to see the beginnings. I spoke with a land development attorney who kind of regularly appears before this body, who, who donates $50,000 a year to municipal candidates, and he told me, he or she told me, you know, I'd be like glad to see that go away. That money comes out of my own personal funds, but it's sort of a necessary, the cost of doing business. And, and I go back to David's argument, it's just the appearance. And again, we're not necessarily just talking about that, the whole focus, we're not talking about corruption, we're not saying this, this council is corrupt, or past councils have been corrupt, but I'm very supportive of what we're going to talk about later, and reducing the amounts. But that still does not get to the heart of the issue, which is reducing the barriers of people to run for office. That's it. And I ask, I want to ask each one of you, why not put it to the voters? What are, what are we afraid of? Why not just put it to the voters?
I've already stated my position. I don't think taxes are...
But that one is a question, I want that question answered.
I told you. I don't think a tax is a good thing for that. We have a lot of stuff that's going to be coming forward for our community, and I've already stated that. And with that being said though, I want to, I really think this has been a good discussion. We've had a lot of good public input, and I'm sure there's going to be continued to have more public input. And I, I do appreciate and respect the work that you've done and the committee has done.
I do want to jump in on one thing though, and I...
And then we're going to wrap this up, since there's consensus.
Yeah, I, I respect, I respect your opinion on that, but, but both, I've heard a couple of people say now, well, it's an ongoing discussion. It's not. It's about to be done. There is no ongoing discussion. This is the end of the moment. So, and that's fine, that's just democracy at work, but it's not an ongoing discussion anymore.
Which is actually why...
Project, project over, I think. No, which is why, I do, I do want to, you know, answer Councilman Q B's question about the issue of, and David and I had this conversation, I believe, last Friday. One of my biggest concerns, I mean, so we talk about the utility bill. We already know that coming up in January, there's going to be a waste, a water and wastewater increase that's going to be, that's going to go to our voters, not voters, but our residents are all going to feel that, because we don't make money off of water and wastewater, we simply just have to keep up with costs and expenses. So it's, so we're going to have to raise that anyway, and so our residents are going So it's, so we're gonna have to raise that anyway, and so our residents are going to see an increase. We've, we had a presentation earlier tonight about the arts master plan, uh, which I think is wonderful. And the conversation about, you know, preserving and maintaining existing assets like the Tempe Center for the Arts and a lot of our other arts facilities, I think is very important. And frankly, that tax runs out in 2020. If we don't get that money back, we're gonna be in a whole world of hurt. But that's to preserve a lot of the existing assets that are already out there that none of us want to deteriorate. Also, you know, to Councilmember QB's point, she actually, from my perspective, has raised a great point about talking about a, a potential quality of life tax for parks. Uh, as we all know, we have more parks per square mile than any other city in the East Valley. And one of the things that we consistently hear from residents who come forward is, we have got to do something about the quality of our parks. And if there's some way to find a way to inject more money into that to speed up the park renovations, I think, I think I would absolutely support that. I'd love to see that proposal, I think it's a really good one. My concern though, comes back to the notion of how many times we have to keep going back to voters asking for more money in taxes. And my concern is, even though I think our, our residents are actually very forgiving and very progressive and forward-thinking, my concern is at some point, I feel like if every year or every two years, they feel like we're going back and asking for more money for something else, at some point, they're gonna begin to say no. Because every election cycle, you know, you guys are asking me for more money out of my own pocket, why don't you just find a way to manage your budgets more effectively? That may not be exactly the case. But my concern is, I don't want to create the attitude that every couple of years or every year, we're going back to the residents and asking for additional money. I think at some point, it creates a very negative environment that might potentially get one of the things that we absolutely need, like a potential parks tax or an arts tax, voted down because at some point, the residents just say, I've had enough. And I go, no, 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 but I really need this one. Yeah, but, you know, I, I voted for the other two, I'm just done with this third one. And I'm, I'm very legitimately concerned about that, and that is, that's my personal reason though.
And Mayor, just to that point, if I could just answer that point, make one last point.
Right.
And that is, it's, it's one thing, it's one thing to say, here is an existing city service that we want to augment, or, uh, here's a city program that needs more money. But that's not what we're going to, if we went to the voters, it wouldn't be what we'd be asking. We'd be asking, do you want to change the complexion of our elections to this entirely different system, which would cost $100,000 a year? That's the question, you and I had that talk, it's a very different question. And, and to, to wrap it up, um, if I understand COW correctly, that, what this was agendized for was for direction to staff, that it was ready for direction and status updates, right? So this isn't the place where we vote on whether or not this goes on the ballot, that would be at a regular council meeting. This is the place where we decide what direction to give to staff. I, I, I looked at the rules and procedures today and it seemed pretty clear to me that only two members of the council needed to be in favor of putting something up for a vote.
So, okay. I mean, right now.
It seems like we have more than two members that are wanting to stick with a vote, so I, I think that's the direction, at least I'd like to vote.
Okay, and then we, and then if that does happen, we need to change our rules and procedures for how we do the COW, because originally the intent of the COW was to move forward.
Yeah, you know, you're writing specifically for me, I remember him well.
So, so if that's, if that's the intent, if Councilmember Shire, Shire, that's your intent.
Well, then what's the point of having two members?
This is a way so that somebody can say, I'm not voting no based on whether it's a good or bad idea, I'm voting no because you didn't follow the procedure we set in place. And that way you can vote no without discussing the merits of the idea.
You've all made clear positions. I'll defer to our city attorney and our city clerk.
She was just watching, she's like, I was having a good time, I had some popcorn.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. You know, the recommendation that was brought forward by the, um, city manager working group was to put it on the next formal council agenda meeting. So, I guess, sitting here listening to it, my thought was, there was not consensus at this meeting to move it forward to the next regular council meeting.
And how many council members are required to, in order to put something up for a vote?
I think it is two for a regular council agenda, correct?
How long?
Okay. Thank you. All right. Items for council consideration for COW. So as we go through the new COW items, I want to make sure that as a group, we have a slightly more robust conversations than we have in the past. And before we give any consensus to move forward, or not to move forward on an item, I want to walk us through the memos as they're presented to us, discuss each item. And the goal is to get more clarity on the, the charge of each proposed working group. It will help clarify how much staff time will be used, it will also help allow us to have a quick discussion on who should be engaged in terms of stakeholders, um, in the working group. And I feel that this will help us and help the committees that we've already established, that are working on stuff to be more efficient, and also help our public at this point to have a better idea of exactly what each committee or item we will be working on. And I think that, I think we all agree that transparency is a good thing, considering the discussion we just had. So, item 3B1 is to explore the ability to require the future vending machines, RFP, and contracts at city vending machines that are accessed, that are accessible to children to not have unhealthy food, as defined by reputable third-party organizations. And I believe Councilmember Granville, this is your proposed working group is from you, so can you let us know what you will be doing with this and what are you looking to accomplish with it?
I think that's a great question, Mayor. And this has actually changed just in the last week or two. You know, um, two years ago, when we voted on our vending machine contract, I asked a question and just said, well, why, is there a way to not have so much junk food in here? And, uh, the, the comment that we got back from staff is, well, they say that if they can't put in junk food in a vending machine, no one will buy, uh, out of the vending machine. And so, I said, well, can we put in some healthy options? And they said, sure, we'll talk to them about it. And they did, but of course, if you've got junk food next to healthy food, the junk food sells and the healthy food doesn't. And so then, a year later, we renewed our contract and I said, okay, I'm telegraphing what's gonna happen here, uh, in places where we know we put children, like Escalante Center or Pile Center, and they're unsupervised, in those places, I don't think we should have access to choices that maybe a parent wouldn't be making at home for a child that's now sort of in the care of Tempe. And so I figured in a year, we can sort this out. I unfortunately never heard back from staff on any options related to that. So now that six months has gone by, I thought, okay, I'm just gonna have to do this myself. So I went to Councilmember Arredondo Savage, who'd mentioned that she had worked on this, and it was a relatively complex issue at the school board, trying to figure out what's healthy. Um, you know, is a granola bar healthy? Is a granola bar with chocolate chips in it healthy? Where do you draw the line?
Please tell me the answer is yes. Cause I, I don't know how I'm gonna go on with that.
I know. We thought wine was healthy, but apparently that's not appropriate for vending machines. I don't understand that myself. Um, all right, it's got grapes, grapes are healthy. Uh, and so the thing that Councilmember Arredondo and Savage and I talked about is maybe if we had a little bit of staff time, we could figure out a way to find some, you know, national government agency, the government agency for healthy vending machines or something like that. And they assume have some list of healthy food versus unhealthy food. And so we could construct an RFP that said, when you bid, you may only stock vending machines of a certain type with things on the approved list from the National Organization of Healthy Vending Machine, blah, 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 dot gov. What we found out when we put this on the agenda just a few days later, was that there is, because of the legislature, an organization that has the ability to go to, uh, state entities or city entities and say, you don't get to bid your RFPs for vending machines, we just, we're your only vendor. And the state has granted, it's an organization for the blind, I think, um, the ability to take over any city vending machine contract, it becomes a no-bid contract, there is nothing we can say or do about it, which is fine, it serves a great organization. But the thing that, as we talked about it, we were like, okay, so what does this COW item now become? And what we're asking is that you allow us to have this COW item, to work with staff on that contract that's already gonna be issued to this company, and see if we can't just have the flexibility to mold that contract into a way that takes into account healthy eating. So they're gonna get the contract either way, but we've got A, B, and C, we'd like to include his new language in the contract. Of course, before we did that, we'd come back here to make sure you, you are okay with that addition to the language. So it's possible that we talk with, you know, with Michael Green, we talk with legal, they say, yes, you can add that to the contract, we come back here and you go, you know what? No, we just, it's not a thing to us. That's fine. Uh, but we're not even sure we can amend the contract at all, or what we, or if it's a contract that the state just hands us and says, you must sign it and you can't vary the language.
Vice Mayor Woods.
Here, here's one of my basic questions, and I guess, you know, Colby, you can probably answer this for me. When, when it was talked about that we're gonna, vending machines where, I'm getting the language wrong, but vending machines where children are present or are around, are we, are we talking about, you know, vending machines in sort of city facilities like the Escalante Center or the Pile Center or places of that nature?
Where they have unsupervised access.
Okay.
Yeah.
Here's, here's my concern with that. Um, and I'll just put this out there for conversation. For the school districts, I can completely understand doing something of that nature, because for the school districts, you basically have kids and all kids all the time. And so I understand the notion of wanting to make sure kids have healthy food and that they're not, you know, hopped up on, you know, Twizzlers and Red Vines and not able to focus in class. But one of my concerns is that you also, with a lot of these places, the Pile Center or the Tempe Public Library or the Escalante Center or North Tempe Multi-Gen, you also have a lot of adults there, who are frankly, just simply having public meetings or an HOA meeting or a neighborhood meeting. And so, okay, go ahead, I'll.
So let me, I, I understand your point. Let me, let me just give you a quick counterpoint, and I, I think I already know your answer, but I just at least want to say it. By that rationale, we'd allow cigarette vending machines in Escalante.
Well, but.
Well, because an adult in a meeting, an adult in a meeting would have access to cigarettes.
But, but, no, but the, but, no, but I, I would disagree with that though. I mean, cigarettes are, cigarettes frankly, are illegal for someone to consume, I guess for lack of a better term, for anyone under the age of 18. Twizzlers are not. They may be a poor, you know, a poor choice from a health standpoint, but they're not illegal. And so I guess, the issue that I have is that, being, you know, a 36-year-old adult myself, I mean, I've.
Finally, I get your real age.
You've got my real age, it's really true. But, and, and someone, as you've seen, who's lost, you know, quite a bit of weight over the last couple of months, very deliberately so. Um, but still, if I, if I make the decision that I want to, you know, either get a package of wheat thins, or I want to get the worst snack, I feel like that should sort of be my decision as an adult. I really don't want a decision where I simply can't find an unhealthy sugary option just because someone says so. If that happens to be what I'm craving at that given moment, I'd like to be able to make that decision for myself. Once again, one thing in schools where you're dealing with predominantly minors, 90% minors, but I just feel that adults should be allowed to make those kinds of decisions and not have, you know, frankly, in some ways, the government make them for me.
Well, I will make a comment, and, and not that I want to relive what we went through on the school board when we talked about healthy choices.
Deanne still isn't mad at me.
We did. Actually, actually, in the teachers' lounges, didn't make any changes.
We did, and then we undid it. After you left, we made the change and then we undid it.
Oh, there you go, see, so I didn't do it.
I wasn't there, it's like.
I knew better. So, but anyway, I mean, I, and the only other thing that I just want to say really quick is, I, I don't want to make this, you know, really time-intensive thing, if, if at all. I mean, I'm looking at all these new items and I'm looking at all the ones that are already on the list, and I'm trying to just, to fight the urge, because honestly, I mean, if I want a soda, I want a straight-up Coke, and that's just the way it's gonna be. I don't want a diet, and I'm gonna be kind of upset if I have to have one. But I'm not afraid, I'm not afraid to look at it, I'm just kind of a little worried, right, my, my sense, I'm a little worried about staff time and how far this rises on the priority level. I know you've got some other items on here too, so, I mean, I want to weigh that out. I don't, I don't know if it's timing just because of the new contract, if we can at least explore that piece of it, and then maybe bring it back to see if we can even ask.
That's all I'm looking for at this point.
Before we do that, can I ask, Reed, come up, because, I mean, knowing that another organization's gonna take that over, what are, what can we say and what can't we say?
That's what we've got, we've got.
That's why we want the COW item to allow us to figure out.
That's all we want to do.
Oh, she can answer it now.
We think so. We think they can.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, Reed, project internal services director. Uh, yes, uh, we have not finalized a contract yet with, uh, it's called the BEP, Business Enterprise Partnership. Uh, and it's, uh, managed by the, uh, Arizona Department of Economic, uh, I guess it's DES.
Services.
Thank you. Uh, and it is for blind, uh, residents to have a way to earn a productive living. They are very willing to work with us. Right now, our philosophy in our current vending contract is 40% healthy fat, healthy snacks. They have indicated, the state group has indicated that they routinely recommend a 25% uh, ratio of healthy to unhealthy snacks. However, they are.
Which is the 25, which is the 75?
Well, the 25 is the healthy.
Okay.
That's what they recommend.
Their standards are lower than ours currently.
Yes. However, they have indicated that they are willing to work with us. Uh, so, uh, the procurement staff is, is willing to take recommendations from council and, and go back and work with them. Unfortunately, they, they tell you what we've heard from the, uh, other vending companies, which is that the healthy snacks just do not sell as well as the, um.
Surprised.
Unhealthy snacks. However, the idea perhaps of, uh, targeting certain machines that are more accessible to children, that could be a philosophy too, that we could look at, so.
Okay. Was that, you still want to have a, a group?
I, I mean, I would, I think Councilmember Arredondo Savage and I would like to just have the ability to work with Reed and the people that are working on this contract and see if we can come to a number and bring it back to council for consensus.
And maybe what we're doing currently, I mean, cause that's gonna be different than what they're doing, so I didn't know that. We can just talk about it.
Okay.
I don't think it'll take us a long time.
All right. Is everybody okay with that?
We'll try. Quickly.
Quickly.
All right.
Do it over healthy snacks.
Next item is 3B, which is to explore an economic and environmental benefit and feasibility to require gray water infrastructure and all-new construction. Councilmember Granville, this, is proposing this working group. Can you please let us know what your group will be doing and what are you looking to accomplish and the way it's written, and also that I mentioned before, and the feasibility. I mean, it also is looking at, based on your memo, let me see here, it says that, um, you're, when it's done, you're just looking for a report to come back? If that's not the case, are you looking, like, you're just looking, based on what, the way it's written, he's looking for a report and the feasibility, and this has come back as a report feasibility?
I, I would.
And then, we just need a clarity on that, and then.
I'd be, my intention would be to come back with a recommendation for council to review, and approve, not approve. So, long story short is, you know, we, we, going through Public Works and, and Mr. Besler, we've had two rounds now of water conservation policies, one from before I was on council, another one about a year ago. Gray water is another aspect of water conservation policy. The difficulty with it is, we could never mandate gray water be used in the buildings in Tempe, because all of our buildings are mostly built. And the ability to plum an existing building for gray water is exponentially more expensive than to do it when you're building the building, right? You just, you're not gonna dig up concrete to put in a pipe. Um, and so the thing that I want us to look at is the ability to say, look, for those rare instances where we have new construction, you don't have to use gray water, but at least spend the money, whatever money that is, and that's what the group would have to find out, um, to put it in and make it gray water ready, so that in the event you wanted to do gray water in the future, you wouldn't be jacking up, you know, uh, concrete and foundations and tearing out walls. Um, and so the thing we'd like to do is see what other places are doing, see what the cost it would add to, or I would, if anyone else wants to join me, uh, the royal we, uh, see what it would cost to add this as part of new construction versus existing construction, so if it's a 10 to 1 difference in price, um, see if it has any effect on the people's willingness to use gray water, and if it does create conservation. Um, and then come back to council with those results and recommendations, see what you think.
And one of the things, I think, you, you list as stakeholders, city staff and Arizona City University Global Institute of Sustainability, and I think that's fantastic. I would also recommend that you include, uh, contractors and developers. So I, I would, so if we're gonna move forward this, and I would look to the council for any other stakeholders that you recommend, I would even say the AMA, I would even say Association of General Contractors, because you're gonna need to get their input anyways.
Absolutely.
So, I think that's important.
I completely agree with that.
Councilman Navarro, then Councilmember QB and Councilmember Savage.
Just that point, it'd be great to also give us some education on how does that gray water system operate and, and stuff. I would like.
It has to have a place to go to.
Yeah. No, I'd just like to know the general, you know, what is that and how does it work and what are the costs, you know, that stuff.
That makes sense.
Councilmember QB, then Councilmember Savage.
Colby, I really salute you on bringing this up. I think it's, um, a great idea, and it's a long time in coming, and just want to remind all of you, this little Debbie Downer statistic, but by the year 2040 in Tempe, we were going to see 30 days that are 130 degrees or more. So, we really need to be planning for the future, and like Colby said, we're gonna be mandating this in 15 years, why not have at least the ability?
Infrastructure in place.
It's so much cheaper to build infrastructure now. Um, I like to look at incentivizing that and not necessarily, we can talk about, there's a lot of opportunities there.
Sounds like you want to be on this committee.
I really want to be on this committee. And I just want to mention, the National League of Cities has a number of ordinances related to this that they could share, and, sorry.
No, 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 go.
Water Now, which is a group that's, um, recently been funded by the Walton Family Foundation, has a lot of expert, they're focused on water, municipal water policy, and they are very eager to lend, uh, listen to what you have to say, and they have a lot of model ordinances they've been working on. I know Tucson has had a mandatory, um, our gray water ordinance for new construction for residents, it hasn't been that successful unfortunately, but, you know, we're not having much, much, um, single-family home development here in Tempe, but we are having a lot of development. So I think we really, I salute you for that, and I have a lot of ideas for stakeholders and people at ASU to work with, and I can't wait to work on it.
And Mayor, I know you're really.
Do you accept me?
Absolutely. I know you're really active in the Arizona League of Cities, if they have model ordinances, I would happily just take that, review it and pass it off to us. I mean, there's no point in reinventing the wheel.
Okay, so, I'm, Councilmember Savage?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, just really quick, I, the one thing that kind of worried me is about requiring. So I like the idea of exploring other opportunities to maybe encourage or incentivizing, whatever it may be, more about compliance than mandating. So maybe try to explore that, and I do love the idea that the mayor mentioned in regards to the stakeholders and who's having, who weighs in on this and it comes back. I think it's really important that those stakeholders include not only the people that of course, believe it's a great idea and understand the value, but the ones that are significantly gonna be impacted financially. So, to me, it's really important about, we have a really level playing field, you know, Tempe's in a really great place in regards to being business-friendly, people want to be here, I want to make sure that we continue to do that. Um, so it's really important that those people that are impacted or, you know, have development here or possible development in the future are also part of that discussion.
I want to follow up, and I'm going to go to Councilmember Navarro. Lauren, do you know any other environmental experts that we could, I mean, so we're looking at AMA, AGC, Global Institute of Sustainability, we'll look at the league or the National League of Cities. So, I mean, it's important to get all this upfront, so we don't have to, okay, you get the information, what did they, go back. So, in the interest of time for everyone, make sure that we do it right the first time, you get the stakeholders involved.
And if you'd like, Mayor, I think it might be useful, I don't know if we've ever done this before, but I'd be perfectly happy to, just as an update, saying, here's the list of people we're inviting, is there anyone else you can think of? Because I agree, I mean, one of the things, it's a death nail to any sort of project that comes out of Cal, is to have, be like, oh, you didn't get this one group. Go back and get that one.
And that's why I'm trying to get clarity.
Yeah, yeah. And so, what we'll do is, once we've got a list of all of our groups, we'll just, as an update, say, here are the group, you know, in our update that we do, say, here are the groups that we're planning on meeting. Do we leave anybody off? Because I think far better to do it on the front end and the back end.
Councilmember Navarro.
One other thing, do you guys want to explore what it would, what the city does require if they, if someone, if a resident wants to do gray water? Because I don't know. So, I mean, do you want to expand your gray water horizon, or do you want to just stay with a new development? Because I.
Only new development.
Okay. Because I'm very, I'm very curious on.
Greg.
Right, so currently, we offer a gray water rebate, so it's half the cost, up to $200. Melissa has been talking on TV about this a lot, and there's, you know, a lot of opportunity there, just in a gravity-fed system. It's a really inexpensive system to put in, and not throughout your whole house, but just to the washing machine. It can water a lot of citrus plants, a lot of bigger trees that way.
I just thought of something. If we already have this.
No, no.
No, no, no. But if we're already doing this, and that's part of the development agreement, can't we just ask that? Because it's going to be on a case-by-case basis anyways.
No, I was talking about residential. We have a rebate program for gray water.
Okay. Even still, but even still, the question is, in the development agreement, we can ask them to do anything, but we might as well get the information.
I mean, I wouldn't want to find out, Mayor, that this was a $10,000 app.
No, 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 no.
Exactly. I want to know what we're talking about.
Yes.
And I'm not sure if you want to consider this, but instead of starting it as a separate Cal item, that maybe we should put rainwater ordinance, a possible rainwater ordinance or incentive, incentivization in there as well, if you want to limit it to gray water.
I'm happy to do that as a separate, because we do, you just do them separate, but I'm happy to work with you on that if you want to write something up. But I just don't want to get, like, project drift.
Maybe the same stakeholders, the same people, so.
All right, so does consensus move forward? I think stakeholders are important.
From a staff time perspective, though, the notion of coming back again for rainwater and then gray water, and then some other sustainability construction, and it.
Isn't that a sustainability?
I guess my, well, and that's not an active Cal item anymore, sustainability, it's on for periodic review.
Right.
What I'm suggesting is, is that, and I don't mean to overly expand the scope of any one group, but that if there's going to be a series of, of looking into different sustainability requirements or incentivizing requirements on new construction, that maybe part of the work could be, and again, I'm just thinking about in terms of a staff efficiency time standpoint, since I represent staff up here, is, is to ask if you would look at the larger universe of potential sustainability construction elements that can be done that aren't currently being either required or incentivized, you might save yourself having to come back over and over again to ask that question. I mean, just.
Does that mean that we need more time?
If you're already going down that road, it seems to me like there's a certain universe of potential sustainability things that are currently not required or incentivized in Tempe that could be. And that, just a thought.
Well, my, I just was wondering too, I mean, we just created the Sustainability Commission, so part of me says, that seems like something that we could probably help, you know, we could ask them to do too.
That's something they can.
So, I mean, that's why they're there.
Yeah.
And they've got a lot of the people that you would want anyway, and then maybe, I don't know, I just, I don't want to step on their toes, because I think that could be something that they could really work on also, especially if it's the broader picture.
You need to ask the sustainability community their input prior to it coming back to the council.
Commission?
Yeah, or another.
I think that's a good idea. Right, jump in, Mayor. I think, I think what Andrew mentioned actually is a really good point, is that, now that I think about it, like, the, the idea of adding one more thing doesn't make a lot of sense, but when you talk about it from the framework of, what are, what are water conservation things that we think we might want to do in new construction projects? And that might be what happens to gutter systems for rainwater that might be gray water. It might be, I don't know, the spacing of trees from the building, who knows? And then, my thought is, is that, that, before we bring it back to council, that we meet with our stakeholders, we, as a Cal group, think we know what we've got going on a little bit, then we bring it to the sustainability group, they edit it and tweak it the same way it would work with, like, the transportation committee or something, and then when they've signed off on it, then we bring it back to you all. And that way, they're, they're looking at a document as opposed to them being the creators of that document.
Okay, so, the direction is to move forward with broader emphasis, but also make sure that we include stakeholders from any, I mean, obviously, Global Institute of Sustainability, we talked about developers, and then needs to be identified, AMA, and then as well as the Arizona Association of General Contractors, just from a pure construction standpoint. Anybody, any other stakeholders?
Think of any, send an email.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, next item is item 3B, 3, to explore new policies to better mitigate traffic congestion on arterial streets for road construction. Councilmember Granville, this is a proposed working group from you. Could you please let us know what this group will be doing and what you're looking to accomplish?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, first off, let me apologize for putting so many items on one agenda. My, my thought was, this is sort of the beginning of our cycle now that the summer's over, so don't expect five items every time. This is sort of my working plan for the next, you know, six months. It just, I figured, get them all off at once. In this case, you know, it was really prompted by emails that I got, and I assume we all got, related to the, the amount of construction over the summer, and that it just seemed like the city exploded with construction. And I know at one point, there was actually construction on, there was actually construction on Mill Avenue going north-south, Rural Road going north-south, and McClintock Road going north-south, all around southern, all at the same time. And so, every street was down to just a few lanes. And the thing I wanted to just maybe work with Public Works on is saying, okay, what are we currently doing? Are there ways that we can do this better? I know there's a lot that we already do about timing, and if you're digging up the road to repave, you should also be doing pipes at the same time, so we're not digging up roads two and three times. But I would be curious to know if there are additional ways that we can get the same effect at the same cost, but without creating quite so many traffic delays.
Can, can I ask, Don, are you still here?
Sleeping.
I know you listed Public Works, that's why I'm asking him, is there anything going forward in the discussion that, that we're not doing now that you've implemented? Because I know we've, we've talked about this issue before.
Mayor, Councilmember Don Bessler, Director of Public Works, Colby, or Councilmember Granville and I have spoke briefly about that. But, yeah, I mean, it's true, we have a very unusual set of circumstances in Arizona, different than a lot of other municipalities, and that is that we've got this very compressed time to do street work. When you can pave, actually has to do with excessive temperatures and all of that, being a university town, the university, when they're in session, out of session, adds to our capacity daily. So, we're always, and, and our staff, between our engineering division and our transportation division, have put together a very long list of things we do that range from communication techniques, to mitigation techniques, to regulatory techniques, and actual construction staging techniques for both our projects and projects that we permit. We have about 25 other utilities that we permit to do right of way, and I will tell you that it's, it's a challenge all the time. So, would I say that we've exhausted all the lists of things that might be out there? Of course, we haven't. We do have a good list, and so whether it would be through a study group or however a council would feel better about it, we'd be happy to give you a presentation about what we do and see if there's gaps out there. But night work, I know this started out as a question by Councilmember Granville about night work, and we do night work. The last two projects that we've done night work on were the McClintock Road paving, another big one was the ASU Master Metering Program and Rural Road repaving. And we're doing night work, or at least very, very early morning work, on the dam right now, so.
I just thought I'd ask this, since we're doing all this, is there a way you could just give us a comprehensive report without creating a committee? No, I mean, we get a report.
Mayor.
Or whatever, okay.
Absolutely, we can provide that and then decide.
I know we're not doing nothing. But I agree with you, everywhere you went, we were under construction. My grandfather said that it was a, it's a sign of progress.
How about this, Mayor, then? How about, we just get a Friday packet, and if it turns out that's all the information that anyone needs, and that's where it ends? And if we get the Friday packet, and it turns out, we look at it and go, yeah, you know what, let's, let's, let's dig a little deeper, then I can come back with this Cal item in a month or two.
You'll be okay with that?
Sure, we appreciate that from a staff perspective. At least in terms of sort of the, keeping the, the division between sort of administration and execution end of the House from the policymaking end. This Cal item, just from my perspective as city manager, felt like it maybe strayed a little bit more into, and not that that's not appropriate in some instances, but that, you know, if we're already implementing and executing, the reason we're doing roadwork is because council has given us direction through adopting a budget and a CIP, which is your role, to tell us, go out there and fix these roads on a certain schedule, or whatever it may be, or, you know, allow certain telecoms to dig in our right of way, et cetera, et cetera. Once we do that and we execute, the administration of that kind of falls within, you know, that realm. And I'm not saying that the oversight doesn't come at some level through the manager, I'm just, I would like the opportunity to at least explain what it is that we're doing fully.
That's fair. And, you know, according to David, they don't actually dig, utilities don't actually dig up the street anyway. They just lay in their wire, they just keep laying wires. Those aren't speed bumps, it's actually coax cable across the residential.
We do the same thing, it's just to test people's speeds so we can do, and traffic.
All right, thank you, Don.
The traffic county.
Next item, 3B, is to explore new policies to better mitigate blight caused by having single-family homes used for single night hotels. This is Councilmember Granville's proposal working group. Could you please let us know what this group will be doing and what are you looking to accomplish with it?
I would be happy to, Mayor. You know, I, I'll be the first to say, I am relatively agnostic on this, but a resident, actually, two residents individually in about a week or two came to me, or emailed me and said, look, I live in a single-family neighborhood, you know, Broadmoor, Hughes Acres, whatever the place may be, and my single-family home next to me has been turned into an Airbnb. I have a different neighbor every single day, and it's like that for years at a stretch. I think there's two sides to that argument, frankly. One side is, is it's, you know, if it's a, if it's a winter rental, then better that you've got somebody in there than it's vacant for six months. Additionally, there are private property rights that need to be respected. Conversely, you know, if there's somebody that moves into a single-family neighborhood to raise a family, I, I wouldn't want a revolving door next to me 365 days of the year, would make me feel like I'd want to move out of that neighborhood, and that would affect property values. I also know that we have a lot of legal challenges to doing anything related to this under Prop 207. So, the only thing I would ask is just to have some time to work with Judy, to do some research to see if there is anything we can do. And then, what I'll do is, I'll just come back with a couple of options, and, like I said, I'm pretty agnostic about this one, but I thought, at the very least, out of respect for the residents that have emailed me, I would be curious to know, you know, do we even have options of what we can do?
Just so I better understand it, you said it's to better mitigate blight. Right now, wouldn't our code, nuisance codes and ordinances be applied to any property in our city?
They would, but the implication is that having someone rotate every day as a new resident in your next-door neighbor house is the blight. Not the yard, not the cars, not.
No, I'm not, you brought Prop 207, I'm just looking for the interest of time, I mean, I think we all know there's going to be a legal challenge with that, so.
Right, and we've had a legal opinion given to us about that as well.
Yes, and it finally sums it up. Vice Mayor Woods.
I'm just, thank you, Mayor, I'm just, I'm confused about this one, maybe I'm just not understanding something. I don't, I don't, I just don't understand what we're trying to solve. I mean, we're talking about the notion of blight. Wouldn't the issue about blight be with any residents, whether it's single-family or multifamily, that's creating blight or whatever it happens to be? Why would there be some kind of special regulation for someone who happens to be using Airbnb or a, or a service that's similar? It seems to me this is sort of the same conversation we had about the homeless at one point, which is, it's not about, you know, criminalizing people for being who they are, it's about if you're, if you're practicing some kind of behavior. So, I would want to go after someone who is renting their home out for Airbnb if those people weren't taking care of the house, the same way I'd want to go after my own next-door neighbor if they were trashing their own house and actually lowering my property values. I don't understand the differentiation.
If I could, I can tell you the differentiation as it was explained to me, but I'll just, I'll just relay as it was explained to me. When we decide where someone can put a hotel or motel, they can only put it on a commercial-zoned area, right? That's it. And because we know that a hotel and a motel is something different, and we wouldn't stick, you know, a super eight in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And so, the question is, do we view an Airbnb as a super eight? And, and for some residents, they say that an Airbnb is like putting a super eight in my neighborhood, and regardless of if they mow their lawn or don't mow their lawn, that's the blight.
Councilmember Shpier.
I just think there's things a lot more annoying than that. I mean, there's, you know, there's people, and I'm about to go do this with my in-laws, but there's people who have family come down with a big giant 50-foot RV and they park it out on the street, you know?
That is against code.
Yeah, well, but that's, that's a good point. Well, let's say they park it in, they have an RV gate and it's over the wall. I mean, but, I mean, like you said, there's people who don't mow their lawn, there's, you know, people who throw wild parties, there's, you know, and I recognize that these, these things.
Stop talking about me.
All right, yes, I know, you're right. You don't have a lawn, what are you talking about? Actually, you do, you have a tiny little one. So, and I rec, and I recognize, I recognize that there's codes that address some of those things, but I just think I'd be much more concerned about enforcement of those things than I would about creating a new code for, there just happens to be a different person there. I don't know. I just, I just don't necessarily agree that that's blight.
Councilmember Cubey.
And I take a different perspective on Airbnb. I've been an Airbnb customer a couple of times, saved the city a whole lot of money in Salt Lake City staying in Airbnb. But in my mind, this is a case where the market does work, because if you stay in a property and it's not well-maintained, you will give a bad review and you will not get another Airbnb customer. So, you really have to maintain, so if you're a renter, you're, you're going to, and you're renting it out, and you're allowed to do that in a sublease, then you're going to maintain the property more. And if you're an owner, you're going to keep the property up, because you get a bad review and your business goes south.
And I can even give something to even.
Works against the blight.
I mean, I can add something to that, that, as well, is let's say when we have an event like Ironman or like Rock and Roll Marathon, where we have a lot, we have 3, 4,000 people coming in the weekend, clearly, there is not the hotel infrastructure for that, and clearly, you wouldn't want to build all the hotels for just the one day a year you need them. Airbnb serves a significant role for spring training to sort of catch that overflow as well. I get all that. Like I said, I'm, I have no dog in this fight, except this was a concern that was brought to me.
All right, and it wasn't finished, so, and also, the idea that it's like a motel coming into the neighborhood is a bit ridiculous. It's not like there's, you know, 130 people coming into the, the house, you know, it's usually one or two people. So, that to me seems to be taking the argument to a logical extreme, and so.
I just don't know where you go with this, but it's kind of like, you know, the, right by owner, I mean, it's kind of the same principle as that, you know, if I want to rent my house out, you're going to have people coming in and out. So, I guess, where do you start and where do you stop? And is this worth the time? It's worth the question to get an answer, maybe, but I.
So, is there consensus to move forward to this as a working group or no? Not seen it?
I'm struggling.
Joel's last question was a good one, how, how do you decide how long is long enough? Like, if they stay for a week, you're fine, but if they only stay for six days.
Places that have HOAs, this doesn't matter at all, because every HOA CCNR says you have to have at least a 30, you can't rent out your property under the CCNRs for less than 30 days. So, the only place, and, and they know that, and that's why they, that's why they write it in, because they know they want that environment. The people that aren't covered by it are the people that don't have CCNRs, because their neighborhood associations.
Those CCNRs were written long before Airbnb existed.
Exactly.
They didn't write it for that reason, but.
No, that, and that's, that's true.
Let's go to your other one.
Again, I'm perfectly binary. No worries.
I'm not moving forward with that one. All right, the next item is 3B 5, is a resource of feasibility of including certain new language in development agreements and draft possible new languages for all future development agreements. Councilmember Granville, this proposal is a proposal working group from you. I, I want to get some clarity from you, because it's pretty vague, and, you know, I'm not comfortable creating a working group that's very open-ended, but if you can give me a little more detail, what you're asking from the council to do, with more guidance from this, like, some examples of the types of things that you're talking about would be, would be helpful, and.
So, I can give you three examples. So, Councilmember Woods and I worked on something related to workforce housing, and the state legislature immediately got wind and shut us down. Then, Councilmember Woods and I worked on something related to recycling and apartment complexes and multifamily, and the state legislature got wind of it and they immediately shut us down. Then, Councilmember Cubey decided she wanted to work on plastic bags, and the legislature immediately shut, shut her down. And what occurred to me, after I thought of these three examples, is, well, what about gray water? Like, are they going to do the same thing with gray water, now they're going to get wind of it? What about, fill in the blank of everything that, you know, could come up that the, our very, our friends at the legislature don't, don't find appropriate? But in fact, in, in Tempe, the solution is much simpler, because almost every construction project that comes before us has some sort of development agreement. And so, all the things that I just mentioned that are applicable in ordinance, we can't make an ordinance about this, are in fact not applicable in the right to contract. And so, if a grocery store wanted to come in today and they wanted less parking, or they needed some sort of development agreement, we could say, yes, we'll do this, and here's our standard language, no plastic bags. Or here's our standard language, X number more of trees, because the legislature's made some random rule about trees. Or X number thing about gray water. And we could just, as a council, provide direction to staff to say, here's standard language that we would like you to see in our development agreements.
And I.
And that would fall under right to contract, not yet.
And one of the things, and thank you for clarifying that, because right now, unless Andrew asks you, or even David Nakagawara, if he's still here, or Alec, or someone.
Right, a lot of the vending machine.
One of the questions I have is, because we have development agreements, nothing's preventing, if we have, development agreements on a case-by-case basis anyway, so if there's something that this council's interested in, there's no reason why you couldn't ask for anything, and if the council agrees with it, fine, if they don't, if they can work with the potential client, so forth. Because right now, that's what the development agreements are for. And the only cause I would have is simply the stuff that you just mentioned. I mean, you could, this could preempt our friends down at the legislature, because they could be banning stuff entirely different because of the development agreements we have. And it could preempt, it could ban other cities throughout the whole state from doing something like this. And if we already have the mechanism, because we have a development agreement on a case-by-case basis, it might make more sense to address each one as they come forward with some of the information that you suggested. And it could, we could, the council could agree with it, or the council can't agree with it, or we could see if the client-proposed developer would agree with it. And I don't see, nothing's limiting us now, and under our development agreement, to do this.
That's a great point, Mayor. The thing that I would say that it's helpful, if we would provide pre-direction to staff, to say, look, when you go talk to developers, tell them that council's generally in supportive of A, B, C, D, E, whatever that list turns out to be. That allows a developer to make a rational economic decision before they've expended much money. As opposed to the way it could go, is they get two-thirds of the way down the line, and they're at second read, and I, or whoever, is like, what I really want is you to set money aside for workforce housing, which, by the way, is what happened with West Six, what our former mayor did exactly to them. And so now they're months and months and months down the route, and somebody's at the dais saying, oh, no, let me tell you what I want. And they're having to make a decision that they're not prepared to adequately analyze, and that they should, they would have walked out the door long ago had they known that was one of the expectations.
And we could ask ahead of time, too, when we develop negotiations for development agreements.
Right, and that's what I want a Cal work group to do, so that we can, we can tell staff, let them know early on, so we're not springing something like the West Six affordable housing fee.
That's what I was going to say, if one's in the retreat stuff.
We do, I mean, instead of doing a working group, could we all just discuss it?
But also, I think the sustainability commission's a good idea for the commission to look at our building codes and do a refresh of it, because I don't think they've been refreshed for, say, how many?
They just were like six months ago, actually.
They were, okay. We do empower our staff to work with them.
But there's a lot, there's a lot that they can look at in the development arena. I think we should let the commission kind of advise us on some of these issues, the building codes.
But it might not just be sustainability.
Right, I agree.
It could be workforce housing, it could be.
And my concern would be, all of a sudden, our legislature's going to preempt everything we do with our development agreements.
Development agreements? Kind of on the radar, aren't we? I don't know how you preempt the right to contract.
I don't know, I'm just saying.
Development agreements are in statute, Title IX. Our authority to enter in development agreements is a creature of state law.
How about, could we do this?
We're going to talk about this at the retreat.
Sure. That works. Thank you.
All right. Next item is a working group to focus on streamlining the process that the city of Tempe uses to allow for art mural on private commercial property. Vice Mayor Woods, is a proposal from you. Could you please tell us what you're hoping to address or accomplish with this proposal?
Thank you, Mayor. So more or less, I, you know, I think that art murals are actually a very interesting thing. We see a lot of them actually in the city of Phoenix. I see a lot of beautiful murals on walls and restaurants and all types of things that help to maybe activate certain kinds of spaces or draw people to certain areas. And I wanted to see if there was some way that we could actually reduce some of the red tape and some of the administrative fees when it comes to actually adding art murals on commercial buildings. I think it's something that actually adds to the character of the neighborhood, it adds to the character of Tempe, especially if we're going to work with, I would suspect, local artists to create a lot of that public art. So that's my, not public art, but commercial art.
Yeah, I think, I want to be involved in that if possible, but I think, can we also add the Minister for Arts Commission?
Absolutely.
And anyone, any other stakeholders anyone else could think of?
If you need help, Cory, let me know.
Okay.
No, I think that's great. I just, I think we got to keep cognitive of where, are you talking outdoor walls?
Yeah, outdoor walls. I mean, many times I've seen, I work in Phoenix, and many times I drive around and I'll see murals on walls. There are several restaurants that have very beautiful murals that were painted by local artists. And I want to, you know, currently, the fee, I believe, is $244 to actually do. And I want to see if there's some way to limit the amount of time it takes to get one purchased, produced, or permitted, I should say. And also, see if we could even reduce the fee, or possibly even eliminate the fee, because they're actually, they're adding something to the character of the city.
Okay.
But it still goes through a process through neighborhoods. What I'm trying to say is, is because, you just can't.
No, you can't just do it.
Yeah, okay.
No, I don't want someone up there with a paintbrush and a, you know, can of bare paint.
Okay.
It's really for Cory, this is what he wants to do.
You don't want me painting anything.
All right. I'll be more happy to work with you on that than anybody else, so.
Sounds good. Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, the working group?
Myself, Mayor Mitchell, and Councilmember Grandal Savage.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a working group to focus on streamlining the process that the city of Tempe uses to allow. I'll take that back.
Let me find your form.
Regarding campaign finance reform and elections. And this was brought forward by Vice Mayor Woods, myself, and Councilmember Kubi. And again, I'll ask a question, could you explain, I mean, I think it's in the memo, but can you explain to us what we're trying to accomplish?
Great, great. Well, thank you. Just, this is, kind of dovetails a little bit on the conversation we had earlier. But one of the things that I started thinking about, and I know I've talked to Councilmember Kubi about this, as well as Mayor Mitchell, is the notion that, I think almost, I think pretty much all of us at the table think the notion that someone could donate $6,250 to someone in the primary is frankly, an obscene amount of money. And if there is some way that we actually can lower those campaign contribution limits back to the 2012 numbers, I think that would do a lot in terms of alleviating a lot of the developer and lobbyists.
Hundred bucks, hundred bucks, top.
Councilmember Shapir, sir.
Fifty-nine.
Oh, sure. Oh, sure. So that was one of the proposals, was to lower the, lower the overall limit. I also wanted to talk, too, about making sure we pack, we cap PAC contributions, that's hard to say 10 times, but make sure that, you know, if super PACs are allowed to give $5,000, you have a sort of aggregate cap. That would also, I think, you know, limit a lot of the influence of special interest groups. The second one was something, I give a lot of credit to Councilmember Shapir for, which is the creation of an electronic campaign finance reporting system. I think that's an excellent suggestion and something he's been working on with Purgito. I think it's wonderful. I mean, the perspective is, you shouldn't have to, as a resident or anybody else, have to dig through a 200-page PDF to find one single contribution. It should be something where you could go in, type a person's name, and immediately find out how much money they gave, or where they were. So I think that's a great, select suggestion that Councilmember Shapir did, and I want to keep moving forward with that and commend his work on that. The third one was the concept of something known as sort of real-time campaign finance reporting. And I will say, I got the idea actually from something Councilmember Granville said at a previous meeting, which is the notion, I believe you, which is the notion that, you know, the concern about the influence that folks feel that developers or lobbyists or folks have on this body. And the thought is, he said, hey, I had a company send me a huge check five days before an actual vote. And frankly, my perspective is, if you have to actually do a little bit more reporting, that will limit that. Frankly, it'll make the candidate think twice, or the elected official from taking that money. It's also clearly going to make the person thinking about giving the money, or the corporation or the entity, they're going to think twice about it, too. So I have a lot, and also even would, well, we all know with the initial reporting periods, too, this period where you can go five or six months stockpiling checks without having to do any reporting whatsoever. Twelve months. And by the time people actually figure out who you've taken money from, it probably is a little too later they've committed or something else. I would, the initial number I put in here was 48 hours for reporting. That may be too onerous, but I wanted to put in something that was frankly tough. But my perspective was, if you take the money, whatever, from a developer, let's say, right before, you know, frankly, residents and voters should know that you're doing that. Or, for instance, let's say the check comes in 48 hours afterwards, residents should know that you took money, when you were voting on a big project, immediately afterwards. I also said, too, that I think that you shouldn't be allowed to frankly spend that money until you report that contribution. So that, those were sort of the three components of that, but I would like to open it up to conversation and see what people think.
Councilmember Shapir?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Woods grossly, for the first time maybe in Tempe city history, overestimated the amount of staff hours that might be necessary for this. Because just from the discussion earlier, it seems like those of us around this table are fully supportive of going back to the 2012 contribution limits. I'd be willing to say, right now, let's, let's just, let's just have Judy draft it and put her on an agenda. I mean, I don't think there needs to be a working group for that. In terms of the electronic filing, we already have a working group for it. I would love to join forces with you and talk about incorporating into that real-time reporting, because one of the things is, if we end up going with the Secretary of State model, we're going to have to make sure that that's a capability of the Secretary of State. So if we do two different tracks, we might end up getting to a point where one gets us so far down the road that we can't do the other anymore. In other words, if we opt into the Secretary of State system, and it's not feasible to do real-time reporting, then we've kind of just worked ourselves out of it.
Right.
So I think if we want to do that, I think we should work together on that. And there's no one else on that working group with me right now, so if you, I'd love to work with you on it.
Sure.
But in terms of the limits, I say, let's just do it.
Why not?
Don't need a work group.
Do you think we need a work group so we could reach out to the people? I think it's important to have that public outreach.
One of the things, too, just to read about the stakeholders in the process, you know, we listed Maricopa County Elections, the League of Women Voters, the Arizona Advocacy Network, the Tempe Chamber of Commerce, the public neighborhood groups, and local political groups and party leadership as well, to make sure we're getting a really good cross-section of people who might have a stake in this interest of this issue.
Why the Tempe Chamber of Commerce? Why the Tempe Chamber of Commerce?
We're inclusive. I think, I think just, I think.
This issue, why not?
Well, I think, I think just because of the general.
The outside there, I mean, it's just being.
Please, me, Mayor, members of council, we have done just very little preliminary research on this issue, and we think that there's probably no express prohibition or preemption issues. There are some other issues we would like to vet, so just wanted to make.
Councilmember Granville?
Yeah, I think this is a great idea, Councilman Woods. I wholly support it. Two things I would ask, I don't know if we've got up to three people yet, but I'd love to work on this, if that's okay. If there's somebody else who has a burning desire, but at the very least, the things I would add to what you're doing are, number one is, you're not going to come up with a number too low for a contribution limit for me, particularly as it relates to PACs and other organizations.[1526.19]